Welcome everyone to the special closed session, meeting Monday, November 25th, 2024. I'll call the meeting to order at 5:34. Rule call please.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Claudia Arona.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Here.
Mayor Protem.
Here.
Brown.
Mayor Infante.
Here.
May I feel stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Will you hand over your heart?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any public communications? No, it's me on Zoom. My wife is using my account. It's different.
You're just one. That's pretty impressive.
So I wanted to get both sides of the story. So let's resume to recess to close session.
I think I should announce the items if you don't mind, Mayor. Thank you. So the city holds this conference with legal counsel for on anticipated litigation regarding a significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2 with one potential case. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, everybody. We are returning from closed session and I'd like the attorney to give us a report on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no reportable actions coming out of the closed session.
In that case, we have adjourned closed session. We will start the regular session at 6:30. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting, Monday, November 25, 2024. Call the meeting to order at 6:31. 6:31, yeah. Anyway, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Claudia Rona.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Rona.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Here.
Mayor Infanti.
Here. Okay, if you would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Stand with your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wendy, did you get these marked into your record or did you just hand it to me? All right, so we have no proclamations tonight. We have no presentations tonight. So we are going to move on to public communications for non-agenda and consent items. At this time, you may address the council on items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda. Time limit is three minutes. We'll start with in-person public comments first. I have Mr. Ed Skid. There he is. You were hiding it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I am currently on the Friends of the Library Board. And what I'm speaking about is our current head librarian is retiring within the next two weeks.
Really?
Yes, and the city council, she will be replaced by an individual who was appointed by the Galida Board because we are part of the Galida Board, Bird Library. And from what I understand, the Galida Board is going to have a committee to select a new librarian for the City of solving. And I feel that the City of solving should get a request into the Galida Library that we have a representative from solving to help in the direction or the help in selecting a new librarian that would be an effective member of our community. Because currently, our library is being really crushed, I won't say crushed, but they are received about a 40% increase in volume since the Buellton Library is closed for their remodeling. So we're getting everybody from Buellton coming into solving and it's increased their load by about 40 to 50%.
Wow.
I thank you very much and have a good evening.
Ed, send me your recommendation. Sent to all of us.
It's somebody from the city has, or the city appoints somebody to go down, but they need to, somebody needs to talk to the library board in Galida to help select a new member.
Understood. Thank you. Mr. Murphy.
The city of Galida has reached out to me and I've asked Jenny to represent the city.
Oh, excellent.
So we have been invited to participate in that process.
Very good. Thank you. Public comment. Mr. Al Cortezi, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Al Cortezi, solving. I'm here with the same request I've made at many prior council meetings. And it's regarding Site C development that the, and my request is that the council direct staff to respond to our council's contention that the failure to obtain the consent to file the application and signatures thereon of the co-owners of 20% of the property to be used by the development should be done before the application is considered complete. We are not now requesting a public hearing. We are not seeking a determination on the merits. We are seeking a direction to staff regarding a procedural issue. Why does staff continue to process an application that is void under the Builders' Remedy statute for two reasons? One, failure to obtain consent to file the application, not consent to the development, consent to file the application and signatures thereon, that is, signatures to the application of all owners of the common property underlying the easement that the developer seeks to use for Ingris and Egris. And the second point is a failure to supply title reports and traffic studies within 90 days of the planning departments, May 2, 2024, notice of incomplete submission. City staff should not be processing the application under the Builders' Remedy law because the application is void and of no effect and did not vest any rights in the developer. Not dealing with that issue directly could prejudice our legal position and invites litigation. And these and many other of the city's failures to address the concerns of its constituents, particularly regarding this development and the planning that went into it in the, over the past two years into the housing element, have led many to seriously consider seeking redress in the courts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Matthews.
Good evening, Mayor. Congratulations, Councilman Brown, on your election to mayor. Look forward to working with you in the other city council in the incoming year. And there's many concerns that we continue to have with Site C development. One of many is the high-rise development, of course, but what that leads into. We continue to have traffic problems. There is no traffic study that I've seen that has been submitted for this, proper environmental impacts. And it's over a watershed and so there's many concerns of pollution and runoff and a bunch of other things that we're concerned with that we have not seen any impact reports that were due. So, under SEQA, my concern on this, again, is there's no way to turn Mission throughout solving into a four-lane highway to accommodate the traffic. We have no parking available, especially with all the other high-rise developments and all the other apartments and things like that that is up and coming. And that this is, these are major issues. These are major issues because, as you know, pollution, noise pollution, crime, none of that has been addressed, period. It's only the push for more development. This is a small valley. This is not Oxnard. This is not Los Angeles. This is not Oakland. We don't have that room to sprawl here. I think it's irresponsible of the city to continue to allow this. And the unilateral waiving of a pin by staff without going through proper venues of the commission and allowing time to go through the changes that are being made for zoning because they don't accommodate for parking or any traffic. Those are two major issues here that we have that need to be addressed as soon as possible. And that should not be allowed to process through until these have been addressed. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brian Correio.
Here. Hello, citizens. Forgive me. I wanted to talk about the rezoning ordinance and I think that's on the schedule for tonight.
It's on the agenda.
So this is not the right time to bring it up.
Correct, it is not.
So I'll swap out if I can so I can speak then if it's open and I'll come back.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on a general item, a non-consent item? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Doesn't appear that way. All right, let's take it back then and we'll turn it over to Mr. Murphy for a city manager's report.
Thank you. Just repeating the announcement from the last council meeting. It is apparent that there will be vacancy in District 3 for council. The application information is available on our website. There are also applications for the Plan Commission and the DRC, all positions as well as two of the seats on the Measure U Committee. So those positions are all being recruited currently and hope to be filled at the January 13th meeting, Council meeting. Also wanted to point out, I received an email earlier today from the County Office of Emergency Management reminding the residents that due to the storms and runoff in the creeks and rivers into the ocean that it's advisable not to swim right now. I don't know if anybody would want to, as cool as it is, but just a reminder to be aware that there are health concerns as well as floating debris in the water now that's come down. We haven't had a lot of rain here, but I know in other parts of the state they're out there. So just a reminder for the county health department.
Wasn't there also a release from Kachuma?
Not significant that I'm aware of.
I thought there was one recently, a couple of weeks ago, anyway.
Yeah, not because of the storm.
Not because of the storm, no. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. So, council, do we have anything that you want to report out to, comments, requests, disclosures? No? Yes, sir? Go, please.
Last week, I was at the SB CAG meeting with Mayor Infanti, who received a nice plaque and hat and awards and atta boy. So congratulations to you for that. Also, one of the beauties of our community includes the Also, one of the beauties of our community includes the social makeup of what we have here, and the Rotary Club put on a really nice event as, for education to our community as it relates to human trafficking. And it was a very well-received, packed house, absolutely. Law enforcement was there and many other folks, and it was very informative. And it boils down pretty much to, if you see something, say something. At the end of the day, so don't be afraid of that stigma or otherwise to say something if that opportunity presents itself. And, oh, I had one other thing. What was it? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, in that case, let's go on to item six, please, the consent items. Wendy, if you'd introduce that to the record.
Consent is for routine and administrative city matters, city matters and is approved with one motion. These items are discussed only request of council members. Members of the public were afforded an opportunity to speak during the public communications portion of this agenda.
Okay, council, do we have any items you want to pull or discuss?
Sorry about that. I'd like to pull item F and ask a couple of questions, please. So I'll make a motion to approve consent items 6A through E, and come back and revisit 6F.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Infanti.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right, then, let's discuss item F.
Yeah, so this is the proposal to agree, to approve an amendment to our existing grant consulting, consulting firm that's reviewing our grant application process. And it's a $55,000 annual extension. My concern is just, I want to ask some questions about how much progress we're making so far. It's been a full year, if I'm not mistaken, and we have not been awarded any grants in the investment we've made so far. So I'd just like to challenge the assumption that we're going to get a different result in another year of effort.
We've primed the pump, as it were. There's been a lot of discussion with the grant consultancies. My understanding is they are the preeminent grant writers. Certainly, most of the jurisdictions in our area use them. I know Buellton does. I get reports all the time of them, you know, getting grants awarded for various other jurisdictions around the state. We have not found the right fit. Some of them, we don't qualify for because we're not a disadvantaged community. Other times, the window of opportunity is missed. I know they were instrumental in getting the earmark request into both the Congress and the Senate a few months ago. The Senate one was denied, but the Congress congressional request is still out there, although I don't expect a positive answer in requesting funding for the wastewater treatment plant. Jenny spoke with the consultant, I believe yesterday, about parks grant. Roger's spoken to them about some highway grants. So there's a lot of things being primed, and we're looking at all the opportunities. So, but yeah, no, they have not, we have not landed any yet. The original grant was under the $100,000, but because we're extending it, and then again, in the efforts of transparency that I've tried to model for everyone, we bring these, in the past, this would have just gone back under a city manager approval, but because we're extending it and filing an amendment, it makes the amount over $100,000, which is beyond my signature authority, and we brought it to council for approval.
Randy, how many grants did we actually apply for last year for the monthly stipend that we were paying California Consulting?
I don't have an exact count. I know there were some.
You gave us a good summary. I just wanted to know if that was the complete list.
That, my understanding is yes. I asked them to give me a complete list.
Well, it doesn't, it looks like less than 10. Is that right, rough and tough?
I would say that's probably an accurate statement.
And we got no results. I think there's some hope for a couple of these, like the USDA revisit for the wastewater treatment plant, and perhaps some other infrastructure-related grants that are partially governed or influenced by a local representatives. So maybe what we do, or we can do if we were to extend this, is to, you know, strategize with these consultants, how do we get more influence for the City of solving with some of our local representatives who sit on some of these boards that decide where money goes? Because I happen to see a lot of money going to every community around us, from Ventura to San Luis Obispo, and we still haven't gotten our share, not, no consideration. It's the project that I think we are all most concerned about is the wastewater treatment rebuild, which is substantial investment for us. And it doesn't serve the entire valley, but it serves a good portion. And we, we really need to get, I think, strategy around how we address that. Grant funding is only going to get us so far. But I'm personally kind of disappointed that we haven't found an opening for us. Should we spend, should we really spend the money again?
Well, and the old adage, you don't get anything you don't ask for. So we're starting to ask. As far as I know, I had never done that before. We brought these guys on board.
So we never, we never had grants prior to that?
Well, nobody writing grants for us.
Okay.
Grant applications. I mean, we've got, some things are automatic. I mean, you get money for gas taxes, you get money from SB CAG and, you know, Major A stuff, but actual competitive grant, grant writing, I don't believe, at least not in the recent past.
Can they do an analysis for us if we're not a disadvantaged community? Like what percentage of grant money is out there that is not associated with parks and rec? Would we be eligible for? Just, just so we know what size of pie we're going after, and, and really ask them to focus just their efforts on those opportunities, right? We should have had some sort of analysis done at this point, after a year's efforts.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a number that, I mean, I know there are some, but not all of them have that. You get like bonus points, or there's a consideration if you're a disadvantaged community, and some grants have that in there, but not all of them do. So.
Would we get the same rate, monthly rate, Randy, if we extended for six months instead of a year?
I didn't ask that question.
Do you think that something?
Maybe, yeah, maybe we do it month to month, but, but part of that is, or an assessment in month one or month two, give them some time. But tell us, really, where do they think we have a greater than 50% probability or likelihood of pursuing money in the categories that matters to us and that we have all the criteria to meet the grant funding qualification?
That's certainly something.
I don't want to be on another fishing expedition. It should be more deliberate approach.
I've provided a monthly recap in my weekly reports that I do whenever I have one. And, you know, they're doing their best. Some of it's staff time limitations or otherwise not being, and we'll get back in a short window of time when some of these grants, you know, notice of funding opportunities come out. But we're in that cycle now, so we're starting to see some of those coming back around, and we're, and we're trying to prepare for those. I don't believe the contract requires us to be with them for the entire year, so we can cut it off at any time. We're just signing a 12-month agreement.
Why don't we confirm that we can go month to month, Randy? Not that we, we wouldn't go forward with a full year. Month to month as an option, but also see if we can get a, some sort of assessment that would tell us the value of extending for a full year and our likelihood of getting a different result for the kinds of grant applications we're pursuing.
And that, I like what you're saying, but if you look at the dollar amount, we're only talking about a $55,000 amount. So if you go month by month, we're talking less than $5,000.
It is, it's just a little over $4,000 a year, a month.
Time worrying about it. You said we have the capability to cancel the contract at any time if we wish, right?
I can speak to that. So under term 4.01 of the contract, which is our standard, you know, services agreement, either party can terminate the agreement at any time without cause with 30 days' notice. So even if it's a one-year agreement, if we're not liking their performance.
We can just kill it.
You can terminate it with 30 days' notice.
Okay, so we're authorizing you to spend, but I'd like to see more accountability. Can we put something in place for that?
I'll certainly do my best.
Otherwise, we're, we're at $110,000 for literally nothing, nothing, right? That's what we get. No value, there's no value there.
I can't argue that.
Yeah. All right, so we need a motion. Do you want to approve this amount or, or not? You brought this up.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the authority to spend up to 12 months with a request to, to come back to another council meeting with just an assessment of what they're going to do for us, if we can get that in the next month or two, Randy.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I would second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Claudia Rona.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Infanti.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now let's get into something really easy to talk about. Item number seven, we have a public hearing to consider. Do you, would you introduce that to us, please, Wendy? There's not much to go about reading all of it, is there?
What?
Sorry, there's, it's just, it's just a public hearing to consider. We've got each individual one. We're going to go one at a time on these, please, Ms. Attorney.
But are there any ex parte communication?
That was what we needed to ask. Do we have any ex parte? In other words, do we have any conflicts that you're going to have to leave the?
No, sorry, but the conflicts will come in a minute. The ex parte is whether you had conversations with people about this project outside of the public meeting that you want to disclose to your fellow council members, so everyone has the same information going into the public hearing.
Are those considered emails, et cetera, from residents?
Yeah, if you'd like to disclose that. I mean, if there are things that went to the clerk, they're already part of the public record, and we included as many as we got before Agenda posting in the agenda. But if you received individual communications that you want to share with the council, yes, that would be an ex parte.
I think all of us received emails regarding.
That's in the blue folder and also in the, in the pack.
I've received some emails on the topic of zoning with, from the public with a variety of opinions.
And I have, and two or three or four phone calls as well, mostly concerned, the one that we've seen a couple of times is a concern about the modification of the zoning in the housing area that would cause some of the houses potentially to go multi-unit in a single lot was objected to. There was concerns, the, the most I got was about the design to keep solving looking like solving. That was what I got the most frequent comments on, is that we can't do this as a, what's the word you used? An objective? Just, it follows the list, boom, it's done? No, we need, I'm hearing we need to have a design review to make this, keep solving the way it is. Any other comments? That's all the ex parte. Now what do you want to do?
Now, the, Ms. Berry's going to introduce the item, and then I will provide some directions on how we're going to proceed because of the conflicts of interest.
Okay.
Okay, public hearings to consider. Number one, adoption, adopt resolution number 241272, adopting an addendum to the FEIR solving comprehensive general plan update and rezoning, SCH number 2023060448, analyzing the following actions, and adopt resolution number 241273, amending the general plan land use map and land use element for consistency with the zoning regulations. And introduce for first reading by title only, ordinance number 24-376, rezoning APN 137-290-013 012 022 024 029, and 137-310-001, from recreational to open space, and amend the official zoning map of the City of solving to reflect the same. Introduce for first reading by title only, ordinance number 24-377, an ordinance of the City of solving, excuse me, sorry, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of solving, California creating the Village Design District Overlay Zone DD-1, amending the standards for the professional office PO zone, rezoning the tourist commercial TRC zone to Village Mixed Use VMU, rezoning the institutional zone to the Village Mixed Use, rezoning the institutional zone to the public institutional, rezoning the commercial retail C2 zone to retail commercial, rezoning APN 139-300-001, Creekside Open Space from recreational to open space, rezoning APN 139-181-014, solving park from recreational to parks, rezoning APN 139-181-061, parking lot across from solving park, APN 139-173-018, parking lot between Mission Street and Copenhagen Drive, APN 139-174-040, and APN 139-174-042, Oak Street Parking Lot, APN 139-191-008 Annex Building, APN 139-240-058, Alice L. Parking Lot, APN 139-211-004, Storage Yard across from City Hall Fire Department, APN 139-213-001, City Hall Parking Lot, and APN 139-213-016, City Hall, from tourist commercial TRC to public institutional PI, and amending the official zoning map and Title 11 zoning ordinance of the solving municipal code to reflect the same. And number five, introduce for first reading by title only, ordinance number 24-378 of the City Council of the City of solving, California repealing and replacing Title 11 zoning regulations of the solving municipal code and the official zoning map of the City of solving.
Whew.
Think you get an award for that?
Mad Attorney, it's all yours.
That was the length of most presentations.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, so I have a few, I want to walk through the process because tonight we have some conflicts, which, conflicts of interest for two of our council members, which means that we have to proceed by way of segmentation of the Title 11 zoning ordinance. So I'm going to read a little script here that explains how we'll do it, and I will also walk us through it as we go. But essentially, first, you're going to hear Rafael's, Mr. Castillo's, staff report regarding the entire zoning code update, and then you can ask questions of staff at that time, and we'll proceed to public comment. Through that point, we will have the members, Elizabeth Arona and Claudia Arona, announce their conflicts of interest and leave the dais. And then we will proceed through approving the resolution adopting the addendum. So first, we do the SEQA action because that procedurally has to come first, and then we will proceed through the resolution regarding the general plan amendments, because we need to do general plan before any zoning code updates. And then finally, we will address the zoning code ordinances, which, of which there are three. One of them is an ordinance that addresses only Member Elizabeth Arona's conflicts, and we've called that in, we're calling that in this little script I have for the mayor to follow, segment A. And then there's another. And then there's another segmented ordinance for dealing with all of the things that member Claudia Arona cannot vote on, and that is Segment B. Prior to beginning either Segment A or Segment B, we're going to flip a coin to see which one goes first. And then, once the council, the three members who are seated vote on that item, the member who's, let's say, Segment A goes first, then Elizabeth Arona can regain the dais, and we'll proceed through the next segment. If Segment B goes first, then Claudia will come, Ms. Claudia Arona will come back first. Again, I will say that all again when we get there.
Good.
And then, once we get through those segments, all of you will be back and present, all five, and you can vote on the last ordinance, which is the balance of the Title 11 zoning code changes. So, anything that Ms. Elizabeth Arona and Ms. Claudia Arona are not conflicted on. And that is how we will proceed. I know it's complicated. The FPPC has strict rules on how to do this. We decided to segment it instead of just saying, so that both Elizabeth Arona and Claudia Arona could participate with as, in as much of the decision as possible because this is an important item for the city, and we wanted, there's a lot of the zoning code they're not conflicted on. So, we went through the effort to identify the conflicts and segment them out according to the required procedures under the FPPC's rules. And I know it's a little onerous, and it seems substance, or process over substance, but if you can bear with me, this will allow your fellow council members to participate in as much as they can. Any questions on that?
I actually did not know why it was segmented like this until you said that. How much time did this take to do this?
You don't want to know.
Seriously? No, we're paying for it.
It took a while. It was a lot, it built off the, I had to do it, we had to do it for Planning Commission as well because they had similar, so it built off of that. It was easier to do year-alls because we had already done it. Yeah.
Onerous.
Okay. So, now we need to move to the staff report, I believe. Mr. Castillo, I think it's you.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So, before you this evening is the Title 11 zoning ordinance amendments and general plan amendments. It is a lot. As Chelsea had mentioned, this is actually a work effort, not just on me alone, and I want to make that very clear. This has been a work effort that is started, and the foundation was laid back in January, and has also heavily involved the city attorney and their office and their housing experts.
Before you get started, okay, we've got five areas here. Are you going to address one at a time, or are you addressing generally all of them with this presentation?
I'm going to just generally all of them, but we're going to hit succinctly on a couple areas, and we'll get into that in the presentation.
Please.
All right. And then, if I miss something, we can open it up in, in.
Oh, yeah, you'll hear from us.
That's fine. So, first, I want to begin with sort of what is a zoning ordinance? So, zoning ordinance is the nuts and bolts of the city in terms of development on private property and, and public property to a certain extent. The biggest one is it implements the general plan. So, there's a lot of confusion of, you know, what's the difference between general plan and zoning ordinance? So, the general plan is a higher-level sort of review. We went through almost a four-year process to get the general plan completed, which is why on that circle, it's such a big circle. And again, it lays out the procedures for city staff. So, that's the biggest key. While the zoning ordinance contains policies, which is great, those policies then need to be written into shoulds, shalls, et cetera, for us to sort of execute the goals and policies and implementation measures of the general plan. And again, it provides that framework for development of property. So, with the general plan being adopted in July, we're sort of in the orange bulb, which is zoning amendments. So, we have to conform our newly adopted general plan with our zoning ordinance. And sometimes, those conformances, conformances need to be done in a succinct fashion in terms of time because the state requires you to do it within a year, depending on certain applications that are pending and/or in the hopper. The gray one is new plans and policies. So, that's kind of, that's going to be sort of new work efforts that are hopefully born after this, if this gets adopted this evening. And then finally, CIP and action priorities. So, that's sort of the third one. Our CIP is desperately needs to be revisited based on the general plan, based on the zoning ordinance, based on the ATP that was adopted in July. So, again, that's another work effort that needs to get done, not only between my department, division, as well as Public Works. So, how we got here is really this discussion began with the G-PAC at its final meeting, and it centered around FAR changes or floor area ratio changes, and that requires a general plan amendment, which is actually before you this evening. Originally set off in the general plan, we had a very low FAR, which sort of triggered the alarm bells on my end, simply because, again, as a reminder, I'm, I was brought in in 2023 toward the latter end of the general plan process. And the alarms that rang on the FAR portion was that if there were to be some catastrophic event here in town, whether it's a fire, earthquake, et cetera, we couldn't rebuild the village the way it is today. And that is the massive alarm bell that was rang on the FAR aspect of it. It also introduced sort of consolidation of potential zones. We had a city council goal session in March that discussed some of the, some of the issues that's surrounding the existing zoning ordinance and its nonconformity with state laws, as well as its lack of ability to address those state laws and provide local control. We went to the Planning Commission and did a study session in terms of consolidation and uses in May. We did another Planning Commission study session in July that introduced additional development standards, uses, and consolidation, and we discussed those at length in both the May and July meetings. We did bring this item to the city council update in July, in late July, to go over where we're, where we're progressing and how we are proceeding. And we also wrapped in the DRC for study sessions in July and August, particularly pertaining to what's known as design districts for both the Village and Mission. A lot of new concepts were introduced, so that's one thing that both the general plan and the zoning ordinance does, is introduce new concepts under the guise of a couple of things that I'm going to go over. So, what these amendments won't do, it won't approve any specific development, plain and simple. It won't approve development on Site C or change the standards it will need to adhere to. Those are, it's a separate project, separate rules. It's under buildings around, that, that has no effect this evening. It doesn't affect already entitled projects that have been previously approved but not constructed. So, we have quite a few on that docket. The proposed changes this evening do not affect those. Doesn't affect projects under construction. Again, those have already been entitled, gone through the processes, and they're turning dirt. It doesn't affect projects already in the building permit process. Now, that's, there's one caveat to that. If there's a building permit that's in process or been submitted, and it still hasn't been approved, an applicant can actually request that they use the new standards, particularly if it's in their favor. It also does not eliminate the design review committee. I know there's been some chatter about elimination of the DRC. This actually doesn't do that at all, and I'll tell you why in a minute. And finally, it doesn't greenlight new development overnight, just because we make a change to the proposed zoning ordinance. If, if it gets adopted tonight, it still needs to go through a 30-day, still needs to go to a second reading, and still needs 30 days to adopt. During that time, we won't be flooded with any applications. We don't have certain applications, certain types of processes. Those will probably remain about the same. But the actions this evening are based on a certain framework. And here are those framework of the amendments. The first off is your adopted general plan. As a part of your staff report, there was an attachment of goals and policies. If you notice, there are no red lines or strikeouts, because that's because we just went through a four-year effort of adopting those policies. It also is adopted, based on the adopted land use element diagram, so, and I'll get into that one in the next slide. The second one is the adopted six-cycle housing element, and this is extremely important. The proposed zoning ordinance amendments this evening implement those programs. The state of California has made it very clear, especially over the last two to three legislative sessions, that essentially, we are getting, we are getting scored like, as if we have a report card. And every single year, we have to submit something to the state to show we are progressing and implementing our implementation programs. Recent legislation that I will get into, and the last slide of this presentation, the state has now become very serious about potentially fining municipalities if they don't implement those programs in the housing element. So, that is extremely important as a part of this presentation this evening. The last one is adopted city council goals for the fiscal year of 24, 2024 and 2026, amending session, sections for consistency with state law, and finally, creating local control versus letting the state telling us what to do. Currently, as written, are, we have not responded in any way, shape, or form to ADUs, SB9 lot splits, or any other last housing, any of the last 200-plus housing laws that have been enacted since 2015, when the state went ahead and adopted a housing crisis. The city hasn't made any movement at all to sort of play in the state's sandbox. And so, that's what really this is a response to, and hopefully, we'll walk through why we're responding in the, in the proper fashion. So, the next slide shows the adopted general plan, and I'm going to highlight the areas that are highlighted in black. So, those are the areas that are going to be upzoned essentially from 7R1 and 8R1 to potential R2. So, again, these were, in our adopted general plan, they're designated as medium-density residential. In the last general plan iteration of 2008, they were also medium-density residential, but nothing has changed. Again, we just recently went through a massive update in the 2045 solving general plan. We actually carried over quite a substantial amount of policies in the 2008 general plan because we didn't do anything with them. We didn't implement any infill design. We didn't implement any changes to residential in the, in the TRC. We, we didn't do that. And so, again, this is supposed to be our guideline, our guidebook, our roadmap of how we want to develop over the next 20 to 25 years, and that wasn't done in the 2008 general plan. But such a substantial amount of work effort done in the 2045 plan, that gives us a staff, the sort of the work plan that we need to get done in implementing the next version of the general plan. So, the proposed project this evening is folded up into two areas. The first one is the general plan amendment. So, it is, we did go over, again, all the land use changes that we have. We are proposing to redesignate one site, that's 377 Second Street, from tourist commercial to public institution. It's a city-owned lot. It's envisioned to be the location to store city vehicles as well, as well as the buses. The second one is to amend Table 2.1 to correspond with proposed zone name changes, and finally, amend the floor area ratio for the tourist commercial designation to a range from 0.65 to 3.0 FAR. So, in the next sort of slides, this shows you the amendments that we're doing to the general plan this evening. So, these were provided in your staff report. And again, a lot of the strikeouts are simply just the renaming of zones for consistency with the zoning, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. And I will point out that the medium-density residential land use designation allows for single, single and multifamily residential development. This designation is characterized by detached single-family and, and/or medium-density multifamily residences on smaller parcels. So, keep that in mind as we continue on with the presentation. So, again, the red line strikeouts show just the consistency. And then, in the next slide, we have the one change, which is the tourist commercial, which is not only the corresponding zone, but also the FAR to create a range. And again, that's because it's identifying that the, the effort didn't identify what our existing conditions were in the Village, and we want to make sure and maintain those existing conditions as they are. So, the next portion, and that would be the, just the portion, or section one of the tonight's actions is the general plan amendment. Section two is actually the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, which is essentially a repeal and replace of both the entire, entire Title 11 as well as the zoning map itself. So, the first one is to consolidate similar zones to align to development standards through density control. Our current zoning ordinance uses its controls through lot sizes. The state of California can really care less about your lot size these days. So, again, it's this mantra of how do we regain local control while we decide to step into the sandbox and tell the state of California, we'll play, we'll play with you, but we're going to play with our rules instead. And so, that, that's one item. Rename the various zones to reflect their underlying intent is the second one. And creation of new zones consistent with the 2045 solving general plan, and that's particular to the Guest Ranch, the open space and parks areas. We have amend Chapter 3, which is our zoning definitions. Our zoning definitions are woefully inadequate because, again, as I've spoken numerous times, our zoning ordinance was adopted in, in sometime in the late 80s and hasn't really been touched, and our, and our definitions really do show that. And amend Chapters 5 through 9, which is our, basically our core residential, commercial, industrial, public, to reformat them, clearly indicating allowed uses, conditionally allowed uses, and development standards. So, I'm going to get into first the actual rezone portion. So, again, this is the proposed zoning map. The areas in black are the parcels that are proposed to be upzoned from 8R1 and 7R1 to propose what's called R2. And again, that is consistent with the general plan, what is outlined in terms of medium-density residential. There's a rhyme and reason to do everything. It's not just me picking up a pen and calling in a day or asking for more housing or trying to change the Valley for what it is. This isn't a direct response. It's like a salvo to the state of California to basically say, you know what? I understand we have these single-family homes. I understand we have these smaller lots, but we have a bigger elephant in the room that we haven't addressed, and that's the SB9 state mandates. This was a state law as of July 1st, or, excuse me, January 1st, 2022. It allows for property owners in single-family residential zones. That's 8R1, 7R1, and all of our larger lot, R1, RE1 zones, to complete the following. Split a single lot regardless of lot size. So, even though our current code has a whole bunch of lot size lined out, which is why we have 20 residential zones out there, it doesn't care. The state of California does not care. All they care about is your ability to split it into two. Each of those may construct two 800-square-foot units consisting of a duplex on each lot. So, now, we split one lot into two, and now we have two duplexes to make four lots. And in addition, each of those lots may construct an ADU. That's a total of six per lot. And the last part about this is SB9 requires what's called ministerial review only. Ministerial review only is essentially an over-the-counter permit review. So, on top of that, the city cannot mandate parking. The city cannot require a split, a lot split to place in sidewalks or other roadway improvements prior to subdivision, which is basically a hallmark of the subdivision map act. There's no public hearing, no public discussion, no public input. That's what's on the book today. That is allowed today. Any other property owner that can come in tomorrow and apply for an SB9 lot split can get this tomorrow. By right, no public hearing. I think that's not what we want for the Valley. That's not what we want for solving. As I've noted over the last year I've been here, we have a very, we have a great community. We have a very robust amount of public input, and that's sort of the hallmark of our community is that we're all able to provide some sort of input, whether we like it or not, and that decision makers, and that decision stands in the decision maker's hands, not the state of California's hands.
Rafael, before you go any further? SB9 affects which lots? All or all residential?
No, those that are zoned single-family residential, specifically allow for only single-family residences. As soon as it says it allows multifamily, it kind of goes away. So, pretty much everything that you see in yellow on this map would be SB9 eligible.
So, if we had, for some silly reason, somebody came in, we could turn every single-family lot into a multifamily lot?
Yes, that's by law today. And again, this was enacted in January 1st, 2022. Elections have consequences.
Thank you. Can, does an ADU stop it from being split?
No.
It's two residences on that lot.
An ADU is allowed. Again, that's why it's six. Two duplexes on each lot, a duplex on one lot, duplex on another lot, and an ADU on each lot, six, six units.
We have no authority to stop that.
None.
Here's my, okay, here's my next question. RINA numbers. We are forced to allow for a certain amount of housing. So, we have all of those single-family lots that are potentially each now six dwelling units. So, could we say, well, because the state is asking us to allow to split the lots so that developers can build these many house units, then could that count towards our RINA numbers? Because it is potentially, what could happen?
Well, the state already allows it, so that, that's, so that ship has sailed. But we can only count the new units that are constructed. And again, the SB9 needs to be executed by the property owner. It has to, it has to, a property owner wants, you know, would want to be able to go through all this.
So, that doesn't give us any housing credit until somebody's moving forward to build it?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
If you split the lot and don't build on the second part, have we messed with it?
No, and that, and that, that has actually happened. And what is, in, prior to coming here, we had a, I had a couple of applications that did exactly just that. They just went ahead and split the lot and obviously tried to maximize the value of the lot itself because now it's been split by SB9. Only the residents would have the ramifications of that.
Question. So, with the RINA numbers, it's 200, is it 215 or 230 units?
230, I believe.
Okay, 230. So, splitting a lot doesn't, that other half lot doesn't count towards those? Because RINA, we don't have to build. We've got to have those lots available. Is it by 2030?
Yeah, none, and 2031, and none of that counts. Only, it only counts once the unit goes in, goes in. And again, this is a state mandate.
Yeah, I understand that very well.
Is it caked into our RINA numbers a little bit? It is. So, it, it assumes a little bit here and there.
Okay.
But outside of that. But outside of that, it doesn't do much.
All right. Thank you. Please continue, I think.
I know. This is a, this is an, again, there's a rhyme and reason to everything. It's not just some magical wish that's made up in the head. So in order, so we're going to, I'm going to, I'm going to take a real life example here. I'm going to use Birch Drive and Elvahoy Way as an example. This is an aerial that's over there. So again, this is zone seven R1. And so this is what we typically see in our development pattern of our smaller lots. So I'm just going to take 1610 Elvahoy Way, for example. Again, under the existing zoning that is today. This isn't what's proposed, is in the books today. Property owner wants to subdivide out. They, they now have a subdivision, they've cut out enough for a driveway, and now they have, they want to build two duplexes. That's what they got, right there. That's under SB9. Now, the next image is what happens to SB9 if we start doing it through the neighborhood? So again, take the same lot, two of them, two, two. You can start seeing all this little infill growth currently, what it's, as it stands today. Because we have let the state of California kind of just dictate our lives for zoning. So this neighborhood that's primarily single family residential can again, take all these new duplexes, et cetera. They don't need to do sidewalk updates. They don't need to do roadway improvements. The ADUs don't need to pay development impact fees. You know, ultimately, again, it comes back to that this becomes a real big infrastructure loser for, for us. So all that you see right here is a seven R1, the eight R1 consolidation. And so again, these are the lots that we're talking about. This is presented as the most concern. I talked about the FAR red flag. This was my second red flag after reading through our draft general plan is how we're going to go about all this. And then sort of just to heighten, this is, table is directly from our code. And again, sort of from a state's, from a state's perspective, it's one single family residential lot. That's the one that's boxed in. And again, these are uses that are in our use table today. One guest house, a home, orchards, trucks and flower gardens can go in there. You know, and then the worst part, and then the conditional uses, a golf course. The others uses as specified in 11162, and I'll get into that in a minute. I just want to point out the commercial raising of worms or similar applications. That's also good to go in our seven R1, eight R1 zones. And then when you flip to 11162, we have things such as charitable and philanthropic institutions, except when human beings are housed under restraint. Hella stops and hostels, mausoleums and polo fields. So again, this is symptomatic of our code. We adopted a code from Santa Barbara County with, I believe, probably intention to make it ours, but we just never got around to it. So how do we do to stop all this? Well, we have to sort of close the SB9 loophole and provide local control where none exists. And we do that through rezoning it into R2, which allows for multifamily residential. Because now it's no longer a single family zone. It allows for multifamily. We've closed the SB9 loop. The local control over housing decisions is done through the development permit. That's a new process that's being introduced this evening, which is required for all new housing units. That would be new in our code. That provides us the local control. That provides the ability for the planning commission to make a decision. That allows the city to control the process, allows for public discourse and participation, allows for neighbors to get notified that are within 300 feet, allows for a public hearing, allows for people to post about it on social media and get everyone going. So.
But Raphael, they still have the ability to put multiple units on that same multi residential lot by right at that point?
No, it's development permit. So they still have to go through the hoops of ensuring that we're consistent with the state law in terms of the Housing Accountability Act and objective standards, but it's still a public hearing. It's not a by right issue anymore.
That doesn't mean that it gets rejected. So how, just how many units can they, on a multi resident lot, how many units are they eligible?
It's controlled by density under the new code.
Which is what?
So the max is.
Is it less than six?
Ten, it's a little bit more. It's 10 units to the line, but it's controlled.
So we're trading six for 10?
Correct. But again, it's controlled by the size of the lot. So there's a little, so essentially at a 7,000 square foot lot, the most you would be able to get is three. That's the trade off. Or yeah, per acre. Yeah, correct. 10 per acre is what you get, not 10 per lot, 10 per acre. So you got to string a whole bunch of lots together to actually get the 10 per acre. Does that make sense?
It's a diff, you'd shift them, yes, it makes sense, but you've shifted the metric. It's not by lot anymore now, it's by acre.
Correct. And so again, that, it's still about the control. We still get the local control and that's how most zoning ordinance are built is not, is by acre. And so when you have a 43,500, 43,582 square foot lot, that's one acre, which will allow for 10 units maximum. But there are rarely any lots of this size in this neighborhood as it's majority built up.
But you're counting on a process, a procedural method of controlling.
Correct.
The density that goes along with, it changes entitlement.
Correct. We're counting on the objective standards and development standards to control that. And so this is, this is actually just the lead off to the first work effort. There's a next work effort that goes in this, and that's the objective standards to craft how we actually want these multifamilies to look, how we want them to interact with the side and rear setback, et cetera. So again, the decisions are completed by our commissions, not, you know, not city staff and not over the counter. And then consistency with the general plan, as stated earlier. And finally implements housing programs, H-E-K, H-E-L and H-E-O. Those are all programs that are in your adopted housing element. Again, the state's keeping score. We'd like to get a good report card coming back, so we want to be able to say we've implemented those programs. And again, with the seven R1, eight R1 consolidation, you have the list of permitted uses, accessory dwelling units, accessory structures, animal keeping is actually more referred to domestic animals, childcare facilities, you know, hobby farms, home occupations. All those things are now permitted. But again, the biggest one is that end note saying that all uses identified as permitted may require approval, one of them are following either zoning clearance or development permit. So again, that, those are the big changes. And it really does, it's a tough, it's a tough pill. It's either we let the state continue to do, do what they want, or we roll back a little bit and let us take a little bit of the control. And again, the next step is the objective standards that roll with it, which is, which has actually been budgeted by this council in our fiscal year budget, is to do an RFP. And that RFP will heavily involve the ability to go out to the community and ask, how would you want development to shape at an objective standard? How would you want the residential development next to you shape? And there are various ways to control it, whether it's setbacking a second floor, whether it's requiring additional space between, you know, the house and the existing structure. There's a numerous amount of ways to do it. It just, that's sort of the next work effort that's envisioned after this is completed. Are there any questions? Before I continue to move on? All right.
Oh, a million.
It's a lot of stuff. It's a lot. So again, as a part of the proposed zoning ordinance update, we do have these, these tables. Right now, it's sort of a, it's the old standard fare in terms of how we find our development standards. Actually, development standards are kind of everywhere. So we basically are proposing sort of this table for commercial, residential, public, et cetera, that really outlays, you know, what are the heights, what are not the heights, et cetera. So again, that, that's sort of the major changes for chapters three through, or excuse me, four, five through nine in the zoning ordinance. The other big one is chapter 10, which is the introduction of objective standards. But the objective standards are specifically for only two areas of the city. DD1 is known as design district one or the village. And then DD2 is known as the mission district. So again, these objective standards are sort of that minimum standard that we will hopefully implement. And it's, and it's caked in and based on the community design element that's been approved, that's gone through a lot of revisions in the G-PAC. These design districts basically tell developers if they're going to redevelop, how, when, what, in terms of objective style. So obviously the village area is, is, it tries to invoke the old world Danish. And the mission, and the DD2 is the mission style. So it really tries to, basically if a developer comes and asks, and this has typically happened over the last year, what do you want to see? We're able to point back and say, this is what we want to see. We want to see the, the, the old Danish style, and this is what it needs to replicate under your first try. And so there are various methodologies that we're going to use, and I'll get into in a minute of how we accomplish that. So along with, you know, creating these overlay, these design districts to implement the 2045 general plan, we are amending chapter 11. So chapter 11s are purely parking chapter. We're actually morphing that into a site development and general standards chapter. Chapter 12 is amended for internal consistency and create objective standards for ADUs and other. So our, our chapter 12 is known as supplemental regulations. Our supplemental regulations went pretty much everywhere. We're bringing them and reorganizing them in a much more succinct fashion. Amending chapters 13, 14 and 18 for minor edits only. So chapter 13 is actually our signed ordinance. We discussed this at our last meeting. So we're looking at taking the signed ordinance under a different tract. It's a lot of work from my end, but through, through more of a public workshop process and then vet amendments through that standpoint. But this evening, these chapters are just having edited changes in terms of just the names and names only of the zones. One of the things I did want to highlight is our, is the site development chapter amendment is our building heights. I know that's, tends to be a little bit of a contentious issue. So our existing height measurements, I, when I first started, I was looking all over for where do we measure heights? And I finally found it under the definitions, which was kind of odd. But our, our current code defines measurements at what's called finish grade. So essentially what that means is hillsides, topography is not accounted for. So what ends up happening is this allows for a developer or allows for a property owner to essentially grade a pad on a hillside, a flat pad, and then on their design, be able to then say, yeah, I'm going to go up from this pad. It doesn't take into account, again, what the existing topo was. It's very counter to what our adopted general plan has policies for hillsides and view sheds. And then interestingly enough, we have actually a 35 foot maximum for all the zones, including single family residential. That's one honk in single family residential. So again, understanding that where our policies are for hillsides and view sheds. And this is again, what happens when we just took our old Santa Barbara, you know, county zoning ordinance and just didn't do anything with it. So instead, we are proposing a different way of measuring heights. And the first one is, it's called using average natural grade. So what does that mean? That actually means it's taking into account the hillside and the topography by having six strategic points that are measured and then taking the average of that. And then from there, after the average, you measure up. This typically will then lower the amount of heights that are there. It helps to alleviate any potential view sheds that are being blocked. It helps to preserve the hillsides that we all love and see, especially after a day of rain and the sun comes out. That's the whole point of the general plan. It has a policy, it's in there, and it's telling city staff, city staff, go execute that. Here's how you execute it. The maximum heights have been adjusted in the SFR zones down to 25 feet as proposed. And again, that's, a 35 foot structure is pretty tall for a single family residence. Other zones have a max height that remains at 35 feet. And then again, the one caveat I do want to throw out there because there is a lot of concern about the R2 is the council may adjust the R2 height from either, from the exist, for the proposed 35 feet down to 25 or 28. That would allow for a two story structure. But again, it's sort of in tunes a little bit more to alleviate any concerns that the council may have. And this is just a recommendation upon further reflection based on receiving comments from the community, based on reading the social media, based on just, you know, the comments I hear from, from residents and the concern. This is one action that, you know, city staff would actually be not opposed to is potentially reducing those heights. So again, going on 15, amending chapter 15 for nonconforming uses for better for clarification, specifically termination of nonconforming uses. Example of what is a nonconforming use, I'll typically, the gas station. We had gas stations in the TRC. Those are considered nonconforming at this point. We don't have any anymore. But certain uses, if they are nonconforming, they can continue to, you know, carry on, you know, for as long as they, until they stop. And now, once they stop, there was actually a timeframe of over a year. It was actually, I believe it was a year or 18 months. It was a long time to terminate a nonconforming use. Most communities want those terminated quicker, sooner rather than later. So we dialed that back. Chapter 16 actually has the most sort of amendments as streamlining our permitting.
Yeah, I'm sorry to stop you again, but I don't think I understand what that means, terminating, terminating. What does that mean exactly for nonconformance?
So again, let's just say I had a, I'm trying to think of a use. I don't want to use adult bookstore. Let's say that we decided to outlaw pubs in the TRC. The businesses can continue on. Again, they're nonconforming uses. But let's say a pub went out of business and they closed their storefront, the clock would then tick in terms of can a new pub come in within that year and it would be able to continue conformity? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So they, they can continue the use within the year. But after a year, so, so day.
Is a year arbitrary, or what does a new policy say?
30 days.
30 days.
Yeah. Again, and it's trying to close that loophole because there are some uses that, that we, you know, are, we would like to close that down as quickly as possible. And it's very, and it's very succinct in terms of what causes that, whether it's a business certificate that's not renewed or a storefront that goes out. We're, you know, we're very aware of, of some of the changes here in terms of uses. So we want to make sure those uses are sniffed out. So again, amending chapter 16 to streamline permitting procedures based on council direction and state law. And then amendments of chapter 17 for consistency with chapter 16. So getting into a little bit of chapter 16, the proposed entitlement processing. So currently the city utilizes Santa Barbara County's methodology for entitlement processing. So we have this thing called a land use permit. You actually require it for anything under the sun. So, so again, state law requires objective reviews for residential projects. The beginning of those objective reviews are beginning to be caked into this proposed ordinance amendment this evening. City council goal number five and 10 requested to streamline development. And then housing element implementation policies, PO and Y would also be implemented with this processing. So this is how it would look. Again, the 2045 solving general plan overarching, solving municipal code is chapter 11. We have the village estate specific plan. That's kind of on its own front, but there's not much development going on there. And then we would have conditional use permits and variances, which is what we have today. Development permit would replace development plan because the development permit now is able to run with the lay of the land. Development plans kind of, they're just there. Subdivisions and then a new one zoning clearance. So zoning clearance is typically what the land use permit was supposed to be done is a land use permit was supposed to be filed as of each use that comes in, that, that hasn't been done. So we're going to replace that with a zoning clearance. And again, when new businesses come in, if it meets the permitted use, it meets all the requirements, we will issue off a zoning clearance, put that in the file and, and there you go. Most of these, all these, most of these entitlements all require building permits. And then finally, the project completion. So the only one that really doesn't require a building permit is that zoning clearance. Again, that's mainly dealing with changes of uses. So we typically would capture that during the business certificate process. So again, zoning clearance is a, again, processed by right. It doesn't just mean it's approved. You got to meet all the regulated, you got to meet all the requirements that are in our code, whether it's zoning or other requirements. So case in point, a good example is we have a empty storefront here in the TRC and someone wants to open up a bakery. Well, bakery isn't allowed use. So we just got to make sure that you, well, in previous, meet your parking, but we just, we run through the motions and we'll sign it off and call it a day. So that, that's essentially the zoning clearance. The zoning clearance will have to be utilized for ADUs as ADUs require for ministerial review. So that's the same thing. But well, again, we're looking at the objective standards that are in the ADU section. And so there are objective standards in our proposed ADU section. So we need to make sure that if there, if the ADUs in the front, there's a sidewalk that connects. If its style is completely different from the main house, we would have to get that changed. We'd have to make sure, you know, there are things that are in the objective standards that we need to make sure are correct. Development permit again replaces development plans that run with the property. DRC would remain to recommend these projects, particularly on the new commercial or redevelopment of project sites. Residential projects would be exempt from going to DRC because again, we have to do objective standards due to state law. But we are encouraging applicants, as we did in September, to go through a pre-application process, and that'll be in the next couple of slides. And then projects requiring development permits are required to go to the planning commission for approval. So again, that's that, that aura of local control. So again, that's that aura of local control. So what are, what develop, so the development permit is required for residential developments of two or more units, new mixed-use projects, new non-residential or new non-residential redevelopment of projects, addition to non-residential, and non-residential means commercial, industrial, et cetera, of 500 square feet or additional stories. Conversion of a dwelling unit to a commercial use. So we do have quite a few residential dwelling units that are in the TRC. At one time in the 90s, that was a big concern here, was the flipping of residences to commercial. Now we're kind of reversed. We're, we're, commercial wants to go to residential. And then conversion of non-residential spaces to five or more dwelling units. So that's a big key right here. So just this past week, I had a couple property owners in the TRC ask about converting some of their office spaces into residential uses. Currently, as it stands, the TRC actually considers residential uses secondary uses and use those a whole bunch of equations that have to get done in order to ensure a certain amount of percentage is dedicated to commercial residential. Again, our housing element implementation policies are looking to reduce government barriers. It's looking to do infill. It's requesting and, and sort of requiring us to make mixed use a priority. So this would make it a priority. But again, if you're doing five or more, we require a development permit.
Help me with entitlement processing. They are entitled to have this by law?
No, entitlement processing is the, is our, is basically our way of saying you need a planning permission. And usually, that's a permit that's approved by the planning commission or DRC. That's called entitlement. So that means you are entitled to do a building permit.
Ah, thank you.
Rafael, can I pause you on that one, on that slide, if you don't mind that last slide, bringing it back up? Because you made a good comment, which is we're moving more towards mixed use in the TRC. Mixed use meaning it can be business or residence.
Correct.
Right? And if some, but we're also loosening this standard, if you will, resident development doesn't necessarily need to, or isn't subject to any design review. Is that right?
Not design review, but it's subject to objective standards.
Which means, what's the implication? They don't have to go through a design review?
No, but it has to meet an objective standard. And that's, again, that's the next-
What are the objective standards?
So in a good example of the objective standards in the village are the DD1 and the DD2, which is in your stock, which is in your packet.
Yeah.
Which outlay a very specific style. In a residential zone that where we don't want to have specificity, objective standards, a great point is a two-story structure. So we have a two-story-
I got you. I don't want to lose my point. I'm with you. I'm worried that, fast forward, because we're making decisions on something that's going to be permanently changed. Fast forward 10 years from now, with other state law changes that none of us are comfortable with, we have to live with this change. So if we have mixed use coming into the TRC, are we relaxing our look and feel standards?
No. You're actually-
How are you sure?
You're strengthening them through the adoption of the design district objective standards.
Objective standards. As long as we're comfortable with the objective standards uphold what we expect to see when you walk down Copenhagen.
It gives you the, it gives the bare, kind of, not bare minimum, but the minimum standard it is to even get to a public hearing.
So we need to live with the minimum standard?
At least, at least for now. And again, as I explained to the DRC, you got to have a starting point. And it is my intention to not come back, it's to come back almost every year, to adjust for state law, but also revisit standards. If they work, they work. If they don't work, how can we revisit? How can we amend? These are check-ins that need to be done every year with the council. My department division just hasn't done it in a very long time.
Understood. Thank you.
That's a lot. So finally, sort of to wrap up the entitlement processing, we're adding temporary use permits. This is something that businesses had asked for in terms of having, being able to play acoustic music. It required a conditional use permit in our old code. We rolled it back with the TUP. We actually are going to create time limits for entitlements. However, we don't have any time limits. So what that means is an entitlement can actually live on for quite some time. This would set a five-year limit. And so at the end of five years, if they don't pull a permit, don't start construction, their entitlement goes away. That's actually, again, a failsafe for us as a city because if our rules change, we would want to see something morph to the new rules based on what we set. We do create a permit revocation process. And again, we solidify and clarify that. We create an indemnification requirement at the time of application. That is not existent right now, but that is key if we were to be sued on a project. And then finally, codify a pre-application review process. And this is where city staff envisions really leaning on the DRC. We recently in September had a developer who potentially wants to build an apartment building, and we actually tested our Design Development 1 standards with that. They were willing to be guinea pigs. Did the design come back as, as the solving aesthetic? No. And our DRC made it very clear about that. And that's the great thing about the pre-application process. It allows, it's not technically an entitlement just yet, but allows the DRC and city staff to really give an applicant, go through their application with a fine-tooth comb, let them know what the needs to get changed, let them know what I call the bigger ticket items, whether it's infrastructure improvements. Because as a part of this pre-application process, we now have been starting to review internally with all of our departments, including Public Works, Utilities. We loop in fire when we need to, so that they provide an applicant with sort of this roadmap of, hey, you want to do a development project here in town? Here are the things you haven't considered. Here are the things you need to consider. You consider all these things, you are set up for success to fast-track you to an, from an, to an entitlement, hopefully an entitlement approval. And it's sort of a getting to yes. It's the idea of rolling out the red carpet. So we're going to codify this process. We actually have a fee for it. It's been done sort of informally in policies, but you know, it's good to codify these things.
It also says in here that there'll be a design guide.
Yes.
Design handbook.
Design handbook, yeah. And again, that is the future work effort that we would be starting. That would actually be the first project on the DRC's plate for February, would be to introduce the, how do we meld these into a guidebook that we can give our developers, give our business owners if they want to do repaintings? Give them the tools that they need to make the decisions? Give a look and feel to these objective standards and how we want it to be? That's a huge effort, and that's, and the DRC is so key to that effort.
Thank you.
So to wrap this up, the state mandates continue. These are our 2024 mandates. SB 1037 are new penalties for housing element revisions, up to $10,000 per month for fines if we don't actually implement and do other things. AB 2023 creates a presumption that the housing element is invalid if HCD fines, local government actions do not comply with the adopted housing element. That's, that's bad. That essentially would open up the door for builder's remedy all over again. So we would, again, as I mentioned at the beginning, the state is trying to add more and more teeth to make sure our report card comes out as an A or B and not a D and an F. And finally, this is a bigger one, is SB 1123. You'll gasp on this one. Requires for ministerial approval of vacant single-family lots for up to 10 units. Up to 10 units. And then again, if we don't do anything, we can just let the state roll over, but this is where I need to work with Chelsea's team on crafting that ordinance language before July 1, 2025. Luckily, the state actually gave us a six-month timeframe to work on this.
Do all three of these have six months?
Most, most are January 1, and this one has got a little bit of a lead time.
So those are to be, to be, to be done?
Correct.
They aren't necessarily part of this package right now?
They are not because the focus was trying to catch us up.
So we can still get housing element approval?
Well, we have one. We just need to stay in the good graces. Yeah. And part of the rezon, we'll close that tonight.
Correct.
Yeah.
But then we have to go do this work. So if we close this soon-
I'm coming back to you in danger.
We're never done, is what we're saying.
No, we're not. We're not. That's the honest truth. We're not. But as I said before, it's time for us to stop looking at the sandbox. It's time for us to play in the sandbox.
Would you, since we're just kind of doing some Q and A ad hoc here, do you mind backing up a little bit too? There was, on the slide where I asked about the non, the mixed use and non-residential, keep going back one more. Not that one.
Non-residential development?
This, I think is that one. Hang on a second, let me read. Yeah, the development permits, I think, is the question I had. You're going so fast.
They gave me a new computer.
I, I can't remember what it is. It'll come back to me. Sorry.
I'm almost-
It wasn't that slide, but I'll-
I'm almost there. All right, so that sort of is our zoning ordinance update in a nutshell. It's a lot. This has been a substantial work effort. So we do have a secret determination as required by state law. So on July 8, 2024, the City of Solvang and the City Council certified the EIR and approved the original project, which the original project was the general plan, adopting the 2045 solving general plan. You also made an adopted findings of fact, including the statement overriding considerations and mitigated monitoring. So to achieve consistency with the 2045 general plan to with the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, including streamlining the entitlement process and overall modernization of the zoning cord, of the zoning code, we did an addendum of the final EIR, essentially explaining the reasons and rationales of why the proposed actions this evening have already been analyzed by the FE, by the final EIR, which is adopted by city council. These addendums are included in your packet. So we have five recommendations this evening. Wendy already read them off. I don't want to, I don't want to ramble them off. So I'm just going to move it on to council questions.
Do we have anybody on the council that has any more questions than we've already asked?
I have no questions. I'll have statements later.
Yeah. Mike?
I have questions. I have more questions. Anybody else though?
Go for it.
I have a question about the design guidebook. How, it seems that we have a big dependency on a guidebook, really spelling out what expectations a developer or someone who has a project would refer to or rely on to know what's acceptable and what's not. How do we proceed without defining that guidebook?
Guidebooks actually already designed in chapter, is already defined in Chapter 10, DD1. There's a substantial amount of, that talks about window heights, that talks about how the second story should look, that discusses, you know, what type roof pitches are supposed to be completed, roofing material, colors, et cetera. That's actually your guide. The guidebook really is intended to add graphics to it and add sort of more of a pictorial definition to make it easier to follow. But the DD1 and the DD2 standards are already there. Those are already-
We're calling that the guidebook. It's actually referred to in Prens, right?
Correct. The guidebook is sort of a supplemental, and the guidebook will actually replace your design guidelines, which were adopted in 1989.
We should probably change the language, make it clear. It's the design district documentation to be updated with a design handbook.
We can-
It refers to something that doesn't exist.
Correct. And that, and again, that, it does that for a reason, is so that-
It's a placeholder.
It's a placeholder. That is correct.
But it's incomplete.
No, not, again, I, it is, it is complete in it, that the fact that the objective standards already call out what is required of it. This will just help define and help a developer and or property owner make sense of what the jargon is, is really what it is.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Thank you, Rafael. Couple of specifics, I guess, if you will, hypotheticals. One example I want to use is the OS spacing or open space for, or public institutional, specifically as it relates to the mission property. If they were to have a mission-era agricultural component, that wouldn't be allowed, would it not?
It actually is allowed. City staff actually worked pretty substantially with the Arch Diocese of Los Angeles to craft exceptions and also additional language in the use table and the uses. The, I got, received an email today from the Arch Diocese, Landy's attorney, asking if there were any additional clarifications, but they were actually okay with everything as written. Because again, we worked with the Arch Diocese to ensure that the functions of the church itself would not change based on the proposed zoning ordinance this evening.
And because it's private property, if they wanted to have trade fairs or special events, will they also be required a permit?
A temporary use permit? Potentially, yes, but as far as any of the church activities, no. No, not at all. So, and again, the temporary use permit is intended just to verify that what they're doing is, is, you know, what they're intending is allowed, just make sure safety is upheld and the permit's issued out. So that's about it. There's not much to a TUP.
With any of these changes that we have proposed, do any of them allow for these mini homes or containers-type homes that be effective anywhere in our city?
You mean tiny homes? It does not because that subject has not been broached. Tiny homes actually don't count as ADUs. It requires a whole different subsection, and, and that hasn't really been a subject that's been brought up by the council. Is it something that we could do in the future? Most certainly. But there needs to be careful consideration when it comes to tiny homes because tiny homes require, do, do require infrastructure connections still, and ultimately, the end, the tiny home and the cost of an ADU, once weighed by the property owner, kind of go hand in hand.
I guess my concern is, how, how does the state look at those today with our current zoning and whatnot?
They don't consider a tiny home a unit.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
Wait, but isn't it, I mean, tiny home is more of an umbrella term for a trend rather than a type of structure. I mean, anything could be a tiny home, whether it is converted to garage to, I don't know, a boat.
A tiny home actually has a true definition from HCD and HUD, which is a structure that's on a trailer or wheel, and it has to conform, I believe it's under 400 square feet. I'm trying to remember this tiny home discussion I had a jurisdiction ago. And so the state was very specific when we previously asked that question, could we count tiny homes, meaning arena numbers? And it was meant for the nephophinically, no.
Oh, wait, so tiny homes are on wheels, like they're, they're movable?
Oh, yeah, very much. That's the intention, is that you wheel them out, you wheel them in.
Okay, so a pre-manufactured home that you buy from Amazon, if it's not-
It's like a container.
If it doesn't move, then it's, it's not a tiny home?
Correct. If it doesn't move, then it becomes a permanent foundation structure and-
Okay, that's, that's interesting.
But to your point, it's, when you say tiny home, I think of something different because it's a different kind of trend, right? It's not something on a wheel.
Yeah, yeah, I had a completely different idea of what that was.
Yeah, an actual tiny home, like 200 square feet on a permanent foundation, that's an ADU.
Okay.
Whether, yeah, that, that's a different story. When I, when I hear tiny home, all I think of is tiny home on wheels with the wheel end in the back, connected with a sewer hookup, off you go, and then it could be wheeled back out. That's a, that's a tiny home.
And if you don't charge rent, they'd be like a stay-free mini pad?
No comment.
Sorry, I'm not quite finished with the list of questions. From a, you'd mentioned that the expiration of these would be five years?
Of entitlements, yes. Again, there's none today.
And how did you arrive at the five-year period?
Five years typically is derived with, coinciding with maps. So again, rhyme and reason to everything, just like there's a 500-square-foot limit in terms of what triggers a development permit. And that's because 500 square feet is the magical number in the California Building Code to acquire geotechnical studies and other, other necessary studies. So the five years is sort of tied with map act requirements. So typically, most maps expire after five years.
The maps do, but not the entitlements is what we're talking about.
Well, they would be one in the same at this point. We would combine the two together. Right now, they're not combined. So case in point, 670 Alamo-Pintado, which is across from Site C, our development plan expired, has an expiration date of three years.[1737.13] You can then do time extensions each and every year, but the map expired in two. So it left the developer to have a approved development plan, but an expired map. That's what we don't want to happen.
Okay, can, do we have the opportunity to go to public comment for all of these before we recuse and send people out of here?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to do public comment for all of it and then I'll come back and do the prompt you for the rest of how we're going to handle it.
Thank you. I'm going to need some help with that one, I'm sure. All right, so public comment. I have a request from Ms. Matthews.
Pardon?
Mr. Mayor, if you could also just formally say you're opening the public hearing.
Say that we're opening a public hearing? Okay, we're opening a public hearing.
Thank you.
And we're going to start with Dr. Matthews.
I got warm chili and cornbread waiting for me. Anyway, so there's a plethora of concerns that I have here, one of which is changing the housing element from an R1 to then combining them. It's interesting because most homeowners here, if you notice, they have the ability and some of them do, have a small home behind a studio, a grandma's suite. Most homeowners don't have the money to build six units on their lot and they, nor would they want to remove their home or split that home in order to be able to do that. If anything, maybe just one. However, if you do combine and you can have up to 10 units, hmm, who's going to afford that? Who's going to want that? Developers. And it just appears there's a huge push for developers. And I, it's a continuing, resounding ring in my head, let's bring in more development. Let's bring more developers. Let's bring more housing. Interesting. How are we going to deal with the traffic? How are we going to deal with the parking? How are we going to deal with environmental issues? You guys don't even have sewage figured out. So tell me, how is all this going to help solving? Keep the quaintness. Oh, by the way, change it into another Oakland or Oxnard and guess what? Tourism goes away. Our funding goes away. Right? And we just become another small town in a valley, stuck in high traffic. So no jobs. A lot of the local young people coming up compete with jobs here, coming, having other people come in. How are we going to provide that? Is there any outlook for job growth here? So let's keep in mind, when you talk about the future, what's the future outlook that you want for the city of solving? What do you ultimately want it to turn out to be? Another Oakland? Another Oxnard? So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Cortezi?
Mr. Mayor, could I, see Mr. Peterson back there, could I follow his presentation?
Certainly.
Thank you.
If he makes one. He didn't turn in a report, I don't think, but yeah, okay. Mr. Brian Creo. Oh, I do have one for Eric.
City Council? Residents, citizens? My hand, my head is spinning. That's a lot of information, but here we are again, addressing a decision that will carry significant implications for the future of solving, but, but this time it's sweeping. It's a rezone proposal that could and will permanently change the character of our city. The proposal to rezone all seven R1 and eight R1 parcels currently designated for single family homes into our two zones, which will allow duplexes to be considered without enough time. This whole proposal will, does not give us enough time for the community to process the vast amount of information and to understand the full ramifications of it. Let me be clear, the opposition or this opposition is not about NIMBYism. Solving residents are not against housing solutions or thoughtful growth. We support reasonable development that enhances our town while preserving its unique charm. This zoning change has not been accompanied by a thorough, in my opinion, transparent analysis of its potential impacts, as our last speaker said, on infrastructure, parking, traffic, emergency services, or the very sense of community that makes solving so unique and special. If this change is approved, every single family neighborhood in solving could suddenly see duplexes or conversions next door and this will have significant effects, not just for solving, but for the entire San Ynez Valley, putting additional strain on shared resources and potentially disrupting the balance that has made our town and valley so desirable. The city and planning staff obviously have clearly worked hard to get to this, to this moment. They prepared their proposal, but there's simply, as we've all found tonight, way too much information for the community to process in such a short time. And I feel we need more time to review it, to analyze it and to provide meaningful feedback on these proposed changes. Rushing this process now risks unintended consequences that can and will likely harm solving for generations to come. Tonight, I urge this council to pause the process and ensure we take the time to make informed, thoughtful decisions that reflect the values and the priorities, priorities of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Skid. Aaron, I think you're up, sir. And then there's two or three that want to follow you. Yeah.
Aaron Peterson, City of solving. I'm, I'm talking only focused on 1110 A6, which is the village design district, which is on page 265. The concern that I have many residents have is that while staff has worked toward coming up with the objective standards, two things step out. We need some objective standards which are broad. We also need a DRC to do the details. We don't understand the rush to get the objective standards as hardworking as staff has been on it, but they've missed many key elements, in my opinion, and many's. We could start off with additions that are greater than 500 square feet, it applies. Under 500 square feet, they don't apply. That's the size of your garage. I could have 500 square feet and not have to meet development standards. Stucco must be smooth finish. Bricks have to be yellow hue or red hue. The half timbers have to be 18 inches apart, but then the beams have to be 24 inches apart. We have dark brown, charcoal gray, darker tones. We've got steep roofs that now have dropped in, in height from what we do have our current design guidelines, which have been adopted, as staff pointed out, and they're there. Now they are 30% instead of 50% at a minimum. We have first floor heights that are 12 feet, second floor heights of residential, which is 10. We have got extended eaves have to be 12 inches and, and what if somebody's six inches? The, the detail that they went through is, is admirable, but they needed input from DRC, they needed input from a working group. They, these have been here for 30, 40 years. Many parents of ours, our generation, my generation, have worked timelessly on it. They've come up with break, broken out how the windows should be set one way or the other and the sizes and things, but yet we didn't address doors. Doors are pretty darn important. So when staff says, we have guidelines and it's in here in this, in this, it's a good start and it's something to work off. Don't pass it as a law and then say we're going to go back and change it. Now, I've heard that, that we have to pass this and get objective standards in our T R C immediately because we have residential zoning. We do. We have residential zoning, which is down on Copenhagen Street between Fifth and First Place. That was changed years ago to meet arena numbers into a DR 20 zone. We then did an overlay to allow vacation rentals. We then, the G pack recommended to include that extra zone. Those, those seven or eight parcels into our village zone so that they had to meet these standards. Well, I think we're in, I think we're in trouble on that. Listening to staff, if we have to have housing element that is absolutely objective standards or we're going to get sued by a developer, take them back out. They don't have to be under that DRC. And mixed use, exactly what you talked about are mixed use. Then make the mixed use 51% commercial and 49% residential and therefore we don't have to perhaps meet objective standards in our downtown area. Otherwise, if you're doing the mixed use, then the whole thing has to be objective and do away with the DRC. Slow that portion down. There's no reason to rush that. Thank you.
Go at Wendy.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. That's a whole bunch of good points. All right, now, Mr. Al Cortezi.
Well, I, oh my, I, I do want to commend Raphael for the immense amount of work he put into this and it's truly a, quite a, quite an impressive project. The problem is that I don't think, as some of the speakers have indicated, and I think what Mr. Peterson was getting at was that there really hasn't been enough time to review all of these items. And I think it would be fair to say that the, the council should take at least another couple of weeks to look at some of the details in here. For, for one thing, I just don't understand why it is necessary for us to trade 10 units for six units and, and how that's an advantage and, and enables local planning in light of the requirements that the state has placed on us. So if, I mean, if you, if you understand it, that's fine. I don't understand it and I think it would take a little time to figure that one out. I, I wanted to point out a couple of the things that, that jumped out at me. In, in other words, in these municipal code updates that, that the, that this, that this mandates, basically there's a requirement that is pursuant to AB 2162, which is to allow 100% affordable housing developments with 25% or 12 units, whichever is greater of supportive housing by right in all zones where mixed and multifamily housing is permitted. And I don't know whether it's necessary to include that in the, in the, I'm sorry, in the municipal code as a requirement since it is a, it is on the, on the, it is a state statute. Another thing is allow for transmittal and supportive housing, again, in compliance with AB 2162. And that, that basically is a repeat of, of what we just got into. And do you, do you recognize that this also would require a municipal code change that would allow residential care facilities of six or fewer in zones, allowing single family uses, subject only to the requirements of single family uses in compliance with state law, H C? May I continue, Phil, for a bit?
Please.
Okay, thank you. And, and there's another reference to H E U, middle, middle housing, middle, missing middle housing. And the, there is an item here that requires an anti-displacement strategy, whatever that means, which is explained herein. But, and, and even it, it indicates in, on page 144, that the, that the, that the, the code should establish a rent control ordinance.
It's rapid.
And I mean, that's a bit surprising also. And I do want to indicate that I'm not sure how you can prepare objective design review standards without basically ignoring or, or, or eliminating the design review committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's talk about the design review committee. Miss S, oh, okay, well, we'll bring up Ed because he, Ed first. Come on, Ed, you're Ed Skid, please.
I'm going to speak in support of Mr. Peterson. I think a lot of this stuff is, we've got, got a whole bunch of stuff thrown at us at once, but in regards to the design element, I was talking to Raphael earlier and he, state told me, because I thought the sign ordinance was going to be included in it. That has been pulled out till February. I think section 11 dash 10 A dash 6, the village area design standards should be pulled out from this ordinance here right now and, and talked about later. Because this one, from what I can see was there were no public workshops where people could make input to this. We have a design guideline that's been enforced for years and it appears that the staff did not really take a look at this original ordinance or design ordinance. And I think we're just getting a whole bunch of stuff thrown at us and we're trying to rush something through. And particularly the design ordinance, that is basically the heart of the, what makes solving unique. Some areas that we could take out and rearrange for your residential would be the, some of the lots that Mr. Peterson was talking about at the end of Copenhagen Drive. But I feel that this time here, this particular subsection should be pulled out from this whole situation. Because right now, it's almost, we're, instead of, if you can't dazzle them with your brilliance, you're baffling with BS. And the amount of information went through here, as the other gentlemen just spoke before, there's a lot of information here and a lot of people have not had a chance to take a look at it. So I feel that the city council should at least pull out the one section and maybe reconsider for a later date for more consideration on the whole situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed. Esther Jacobson Bates.
Hello, Esther Jacobson Bates here, solving resident, member of the G pack, almost four years spent there and currently chair of the design review committee. We are here because we all cherish our little slice of Denmark here in California and preserving our community's cultural identity isn't just about what makes solving special, it's also what drives our local economy and funds our city. And I have to commend the city council and of course, the planning staff for this big effort in taking on this significant task of updating the zoning regulations aimed at maintaining our unique architecture and experience. The DRC has often struggled with decision making in the absence of clear objective standards. We are a very nuanced decision making and updating and codifying the guidelines will be a tremendous step forward in this very nuanced process. That said, there's still work to be done before the zoning ordinance is ready for adoption. Inconsistencies, omissions and significant deviations from carefully deliberated elements need to be addressed. A few examples, and Aaron cited a couple of these. While there are detailed specifications for windows, there is no mention of doors. Facade materials are too narrowly defined and restrictions on chimney placement and materials are inconsistent with old world design. Requirements for faux half timbering materials are significantly different from what's currently in use and would be difficult for builders. Colors, a key element that's left undefined pending the creation of our new color palette. At a minimum, the ordinance should specify that colors must align with traditional old world design. String lighting is also exempt in this and that really needs to be addressed as well. Most critically, what I see is the maximum building height in the design districts that's been arbitrarily increased from 35 to 40 feet. This change contradicts the extensive community input during the general plan process, which strongly supported a 35 foot height limit. The proposed 12 foot minimum for first floor habitable space exasperates this issue. Applicants can achieve creative solutions with that 35 foot height limit. They can choose three stories, two stories, vaulted ceilings, whatever, it's their choice at 35 feet that I highly recommend. Add, may I continue? Yeah, we're almost there.
We're two and a half.
Oh, okay, good. Adding to the height conversation is the need for that hillside building placement. I think there's some more consideration that needs to be put in there. Perceptions of height vary greatly when the structure is situated at street level versus a slope. The new apartment project in Oak and Fifth illustrates how the perception of height on a sloped lot can offer dramatically different from the public expectation. And I applaud Aaron's comments about changing the percentages of mixed use in the downtown and reconsidering the overlay to, that now. and reconsidering the overlay that now includes those specific parcels on Copenhagen. I really urge you, as Ed did, to allow additional time to address these concerns before finalizing the ordinance. You've just extended the review process for the sign ordinance. It's critical that we ensure that we have this process done right. Thank you for the extra time and consideration.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
I didn't try that.
That's fine, please come up to the microphone.
You have some Zoom Randy as well?
Yeah, I got somebody on Zoom, too.
I'm Jordan Enner. I've lived here my whole life, 34 years. My parents moved here in 1980, 45 years ago. As we all know, we all moved here, I mean, at least my parents moved, they came from Santa Monica. They wanted to get out of the city. They came here, you know, probably as most of you guys, I mean, some of you guys have probably been in here a long time, you know? You know, my whole thing is like with this zoning thing, you know, like, man, you're gonna put, you know, they want to put six units on one lot, I mean, come on, you know? I mean, like parking, whatnot. I own a small pool business here in the valley. I mean, I don't even think I could park my truck, you know, if you had, you know, eight cars in one driveway, I'd be parked in the middle of the street, you know? And Mr. Skid back there, he'd be probably, you know, yelling at me, I cleaned his spot, you know? He'd be going, Jordan, get that truck out of the way. Hey, Mr. Skid, you know, there's 12 cars in this guy's driveway, I gotta park in here, sorry, you know? So that's like my, that's my concern is, why do we need to put all these buildings in there? And, you know, like the gal said, or I forget her last name, but, you know, every, you know, developer, I think, you know, they're, it's like a, it's gonna be, hey, let's go to San Andres, you know? You know, people are gonna sell property or whatever, you know, get what, good money for, you know, they bought it 30 years ago, probably, you know, double the amount that these developers are gonna buy, they're gonna put these homes on there, you know? I think it's, you know, I'm not against development or anything like that, you know? I mean, especially a young man like myself, it's hard for, it's hard for us to get ahead, you know, and be able to buy a piece of property here in this beautiful valley, but developers come in, you know, just taking away for all of us, and that's my concern is, why do we gotta have so many units? I get the state is cracking down, you know, and they want it, and, you know, some other people have made comments on how the buildings are gonna look and whatnot, I mean, I get it, but my whole thing is, you know, you look in your backyard, you got six, you know, homes back there now, you know, you can't even play ball, you know, in the front yard, you know, you might, you know, whack somebody's, you know, window that's butted up against your fence, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, nobody else in the audience then interested? We'll go to, I don't see anybody else who, oh, yeah, Mr. Craig Kent on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. My name is Craig Kent, 45-year resident homeowner in Solvang. You've heard me speak before. I hope that all of you have had a chance to read the somewhat lengthy letter that I sent relative to the zoning change, and also in which I pointed out some inconsistencies between the code proposed for driveways and the, excuse me, Santa Barbara County Fire Department Development Standard 1, which is my understanding, the city uses the Santa Barbara County Fire Department to assess developments for emergency access, and so there's inconsistency with the, what, there's much more detail in the Standard 1 Santa Barbara County Fire Code than there is in the proposed wording for the city on driveways. And the county also defines private roads, which are what we would normally think of as driveways that serve three or more residences. Getting to the zoning, I have only had a chance to dig into the change to the R2 zone, I haven't had the time to dig into the other zoning changes, so I'll speak only to that. I surveyed most of the homes on Old Mission Drive, Honey Locust Court, and Laurel. I have identified the development age of the various buildings, their building heights, and how much square footage the homes are, and how large the lots are. One, from a practical standpoint, redeveloping those into duplexes is problematic, one from cost, but also SB 9 does not allow a ministerial approval of a conversion or a, you know, to a duplex if the, if it requires more than 25% demolition of exterior walls. And so the, we, we're hit with a bit of a shock and awe presentation on the zoning. I also looked at SB 1128, and I believe that was the other one that set up the 10 properties, and when one reads that, there are limitations on not only property size, but population and, and other factors which, which need to be considered relative to that initial shock of putting 10 houses on one lot. And, you know, there was sort of a, 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 a opportunity to, based on a previous presentation, to say, oh, 7,000 square foot lot could have 10 houses on it. No, that's not the case. And so from a practical matter, the, the cost of putting duplexes on these R2 lots would be very expensive. They're not gonna be low, low-income or even moderate-income properties. And so I think it all comes down to what others have said tonight. There is insufficient analysis that has been presented to the public to understand what's going on, why it needs to be done. The first that we became aware of was the planning commission agenda on November 4th. If there were previous public publications of any analysis or this proposed change...
Please, please wrap it up, Mr. Kent, you're running out of time.
The council to, I implore the council to slow this approval down, require a detailed analysis of the change and the impact, not only significant impact for the community, but also the unintentional impacts going into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have anybody else on Zoom, we have nobody else in here, we'll bring it back to the council. Okay, Madam Attorney, I think it's up to your, your turn. Do you, you wanna make some more comments?
Are you doing comments before or after the recusals?
Well, that's what I gotta, that's what we're gonna hear.
Well, I, I think we have an opportunity if there's any final questions for staff before we do recusals, and I think Raphael can provide some clarification in response to the comments if you're, if the council is interested.
I have a question, it's only following statements and comments.
For deliberation? Yeah, okay.
Okay, then you've got some clarifications you can help with, Raphael?
Right, so I wanted to address the design district overlays and DD1, DD2, and as I explained to the DRC, that there, there needs to be a starting point. And the reason being is, at the time of the general plan adoption, the planning commission recommended a change in the design districts and the community design element, and that change was to incorporate a few of the high-density residential properties. Because of that change, that facilitated the sort of bumping up in the need to get objective standards, because there are projects that are potentially in the works within the next three to six months that will come forward. And if there is no standard in place in terms of objective standards, by utilizing tools such as the state density bonus, they will be able to just bypass the community design element and bypass any sort of, any sort of design standard that is set by the village and move forward with no DRC review. So that, that is why it's fast-forward. The design guidelines don't mean anything, the, the community design element doesn't mean anything. So that, that's, that's why these were sort of placed fast-forward as, as a faster incentive.
And by not meaning something, you mean we can't impose them on a residential project because they're, the current design guideline is subjective rather than an objective standard?
That is correct.
Raphael, can you just explain what that really means?
Yeah. I'm the property owner, uh, property, there are property owners within the design district overlay one that want to submit an application within the next 90 days. If you do not adopt the objective standards, then they will also apply for a state density bonus and not be subjected to any of the design guidelines or any other thing that's in there in terms of the general plan, because they're subjective. So they can do what they want.
And design in residential, non-TRC and non-district design with, with the two districts that have design governance? Give me an example of what they could do.
Word away.
They can't, they can't build over 35 feet.
Yes, they can.
They can.
Very much so.
Yeah.
I thought it was over, it was what had to be, if it was 50% or more, then we had the option to do something about it?
No, and again, this is, this is because of change that was made by the planning commission recommending to bring these properties in. So now these properties are under the design district overlay, which is good. However, after that was completed, a developer came forward and wanted to develop certain properties in that design district, which therefore, again, and the developer had hinted that they wanted to use state density bonus to, one, negate parking, but, two, again, the state density bonus allows or requires the city to do exceptions, whether we like it or not. And if we don't approve those, we are the opposite of being fined, 10,000 per unit.
Okay, so let's back up for just a half step. Could you clarify what we have to decide tonight? What is on the critical path to get to a housing element and remove all the conditions from our housing element to get to one that is approved?
Rezone Site C. That is, that is the crit, that is the most critical path.
So, so map that to our agenda item. Which one is that?
That is in the fifth item.
That's, yeah.
Yeah. Because it's not conflicted, yeah. It's in the, the balance of the zoning code. Though I will also say that throughout, dispersed throughout this Title 11 change, we are implementing housing element programs, and as Raphael explained in his presentation, we have to show progress on implementation of our housing element, otherwise we, you know, get a bad report card and get in trouble with HCD. And now with the new laws, if HCD sends us a letter that disapproves of how our progress on our implementation and say that we're, you know, not, our actions are not complying with our housing element, that could decertify us essentially.
Which means we are exposed to more builder's remedy submissions.
So the most important one is Site C, but there is a benefit, a strong benefit to implementing our housing element programs as well.
Showing progress.
Correct.
Right.
Not necessarily approval. What does progress look like?
Adopting code changes to implement the housing program.
Okay.
And then, if I may, I just wanted to clarify one thing, too, because there's a lot of discussion on the SB 9, six per lot versus 10 units per acre. So currently, under the current zoning, that's 7R1 and 8R1, SB 9 under state law would allow six units per lot if somebody maximized what you could do under SB 9. Those lots are small, so just keep that in mind. Under the R2 zoning, there would be a limit of 10 units per acre, so each lot in those zones is smaller than an acre, so just keep that in mind. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison. And we would be, even though it allows for multifamily, that would allow for a discretionary review, whereas SB 9 is ministerial, so there's no planning commission hearing, nothing like that. The other difference with R2 is that even though it allows for multifamily, there would be a discretionary review process. So it's not accurate to say SB 9, you get six units per lot, and R2, you get 10 units per lot, it's 10 units per acre and a ministerial appro, or, excuse me, a discretionary approval. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on the distinction between those.
I also wanted to clarify Mr. Kent's comment letter, which I did read, and I want to be very clear. The proposed zoning ordinance changes do not, under any circumstances, change fire departments, Santa Barbara County's fire department review. Those standards are there for fire safety, those supersede our standards. Our standard is actually 10 feet right now, which is extremely small for a driveway. 12 feet is typically inadequate, a minimum adequate size for driveway, you can go 14 if you really want to, and that would actually make the most sense. But 12 is sort of that minimum standard. So while I appreciate Mr. Kent's comments, the fire department reviews every single building permit and every single entitlement project, and also issues what's called an FPC. And those FPCs include standards for those projects to, to ensure fire and life safety. So pretty much most department, fire departments throughout the state, their standards actually always typically exceed the minimum requirements for driveways for developments and zoning codes. The only differential is when we're talking curb cuts and driveway and entry exits, but of course, if the fire department wants them larger, we make them larger. So if that makes any sense. And then finally, to sort of to address sort of Erin and Esther's comments, and first I, I want to say, both Erin and Esther are amazing people on our committees, and I actually, I take their comments very much to heart. They do wonders for both our DRC and our planning commission. Yes, we did not address lighting, and, and again, there are some things we didn't address in this zoning ordinance update. Lighting for one, fencing is another. And again, those are things that need input more and more, but as I stated to both the planning commission and the DRC and the city council, this is a sort of a living document. We don't want to go back another 30 years and call it a day and not revisit this. We very much need to revisit this. We very much need to work at it, we very much will need to identify things that work and what don't work. But we have to have a starting point, because development, unfortunately, whether we like it or not, does not stop because we're not ready for it.
What area, I'm sorry, what part of this, these five items, covers the design guides for DD1?
It would be item number five, the whole thing. And again, we, you could in theory pull them out, but...
If, if the council wants to do something like that, like take a piece out and not adopt it, we would need to come back with, at the next meeting with revised ordinances and resolutions, I think, because that would be complicated to do on the fly.
Correct, but again, there, there are, we have already a pre-op. There are developers that are ready to go, and they have already indicated they want to use the state density bonus. So this is the risk we take. I, I, I don't hate sounding an alarm like that, but it is, it's, it's a risk. If we don't have anything, then so be it, we're gonna be back in here very similar to Site C. And why are we doing things like this?
So can I just, sorry, go ahead.
Let me bring Erin back up here. He's got probably more direct knowledge of stuff in that area than anybody else.
And if I just, I just want to clarify before Mr. Peterson speaks, that he is speaking on his personal capacity and not representing the planning commission.
Correct, and I was, I was recused at the planning commission meeting, so, and Joni Jameson wasn't there, so there was only three of us, and I talked to Jack Williams, our chairman, at length about this. First off, a zoning boat, help me out on, on a bonus density. You can do that in a DR 20 zone. Doesn't matter if it's under our design guidelines or not. You can't do that in a commercial zone, but the properties we're talking about down on Copenhagen Street are DR 20. They can come in and demand it no matter what. We had that done over on Oak Street, because it's DR 20. You can do that over on First Street, because those are not in our commercial zone, they're in our DR 20 zone. Just take those out. Take those out of the DD1, and the planning commission didn't pass that, they just recommended to you guys to look at it and pass it. You guys have two bites at it tonight and next time. So nothing was passed by the planning commission to say that, that can be changed. That's what this is about, is that you can change it. If not, then we just passed it and you guys stamped it and everyone went home. So if that solves the problem of this gentleman coming in and demanding something that he wouldn't get if it was not in there, then take it out. He can get the same thing. It's a DR 20, there is nothing. There's no bonus density be gone away because it's in the design guidelines or is not in the design guidelines. Unless, unless I'm missing something, but I'm pretty good at this and DR 20 residential zoning and commercial.
Thank you.
Do you want me to?
I have a procedural question before you dive in. So I want to confirm, we have two bites at this. We, could you just procedurally walk through the difference between the adoption, the two adoption resolutions that we have, and the rest that are in first reading?
Yes, so...
So if we, if we take the first reading, we have, the next step is consent, is that correct?
So ordinances are adopted in two readings. So you have a first reading, and if you make any substantive changes, it has to come back for another first reading. If you adopt it as it is now, you introduce it as it is now, then the next public meeting will be for a second reading, which we usually put on consent, because there's nothing really to do with it other than you vote to adopt. So Mr. Peterson's correct that now is the time, you know, you can make changes at the second reading too, but usually.
Right now.
This is the time for discussion and changes. But if we're talking about pulling out pieces and stuff, we would come back for another first reading and not, it wouldn't, we wouldn't make those changes now and then do a second reading.
Makes sense. Okay, so where are we then, Madam Attorney?
So first things first, we need to close the public hearing.
Ah, we have to close the public hearing. What are you, new?
There's a lot of moving parts.
That's why I'm turning it over to this guy. He'll remember that stuff.
Okay, and now at this point, we, since we've concluded the public hearing, I would ask that Member Elizabeth Arona and Member Claudia Arona announce their recusals and briefly describe their potential conflicts of interest, which I've, you know, provided sample statements, if that's helpful, but you can obviously put it in your own words. And then we would ask that the both of you lead the dais, and I will get you when we've concluded the pieces of this that you need to stay recused from.
Can I make a comment before I recuse?
Yes.
Okay, great. I also want to thank Rafael for the huge amount of work and the staff and everybody who did put all of this together, 300 pages of detail. Detail work, I know, is a major effort. But it makes me, it distresses me that we are making a bundle of changes. And I always am skeptical about a bundle versus taking it piece by piece. What, I mean, we all pay a cable bill, and we, I personally have difficulty figuring out what real value I'm getting for the 150 channels that I don't watch. Just be skeptical about a bundle, because we don't pay attention enough to the detail. And I just want to say that this kind of a decision, I take really seriously the responsibility coming with this position, that we're standing on and we're enjoying fiscal benefit from work that was done years ago. Yes, these are zones that, and ordinances need to be changed from 1990. But I think there was thoughtful work put into two things. The way solving was going to be set up, and, and I'm going to say it, and the way that the city has generated revenue for years on end. And we either need to protect that, or we should probably just go home.
And if I can stop you there, Member Arona, because I think that would be helpful at the deliberation stage when you're back after being recused.
Okay, if I get to deliberate. So I'm going to recuse, even though I don't necessarily feel like, the zoning change for the Alice Al property is, is really just a word change, but I'm taking council's advice. I'm taking council's advice to err on the side of caution. So I'm recusing myself from the Sequo resolution and the portions of the zoning code that up, that are in ordinance 24-376, due to the fact that my property is, or my residence is within 500 feet of the zone change in question. I'm also recusing myself from any decisions, including the general plan resolution and addressing prior to ordinance 24-076, since my conflict will not yet have been resolved. Thank you.
Ready. And I am recusing myself from the Sequo resolution, the general plan resolution, and the portions of the zoning code update identified in ordinance number 24-0377. Due to those decisions affecting property within 500 or 500, between 500 and 1,000 feet of my residence and business, I do have an interest in property in the mixed-use vailish zone. And I will also recuse from any other decisions addressed prior to ordinance number 24-0377, since my conflict will not yet have been resolved.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll recuse myself too.
No, you have to stay. We need, we need three bodies. So now we're going to proceed in order as the items are listed in the agenda. The first item for county, remaining council members to discuss is the Sequa resolution. And just for the record, Members Elizabeth and Claudia Arona have recused themselves.
Let's talk about the Sequo resolution. What exactly are we saying we want? I mean, it was a long presentation, but we've got it back to part one now.
So the Sequo resolution describes, is an environmental analysis of all of the changes, substantive changes that are before you. So the general plan resolution and the entire Title 11 repeal and replace, which is, you're going to approve in three separate ordinances, but the addendum covers all of that.
And Sequa, so, so procedural, everything has Sequa before it, right?
Yes, something like this. So basically, the general plan was analyzed in the final EIR that you all certified when we did that. This is an addendum to that document saying the zoning that we're proposing is consistent with the development that's in that general plan, and that none of the changes we're talking about here present new significant impacts or expand already identified significant impacts. So we're, by adopting the addendum, you're making those findings that a new EIR was not required for this action, and that it falls under the umbrella of the prior EIR.
Rezoning is not environmentally impacting anything when you're basically doing with densities, et cetera. You're not expanding, you're not doing anything. Sequa's so procedural, let's just go on with that.
All right. In that case, gentlemen, I need a motion and a second. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Did you want to make some more comments? Please.
Couple of things. I say a couple of things. I guess, what is the, we kind of have a, we're rocking a hard spot here with regards to timing. What is the, while you can't put the genie back in the bottle, what modifications can we make if this is passed and at what speed?
If you, the council is considering modifying the Title 11 zoning ordinance, I would recommend holding off on passing this resolution, because it, the project described in the addendum is the Title 11. So you want the Sequa documentation to reflect the project being approved. Like you, you do the Sequa together with the project approval.
Okay, okay. Yeah, say that, say that again.
So if you're going to, for example, like not adopt a big portion of, I mean, small changes are one thing, but if you're not going to adopt like half the Title 11, you know, I would wait, or you're going to change the Title 11 into something else. Like I would not adopt this resolution tonight. I would wait to have us come back and do it with revised, the revised ordinance.
Excellent idea. Questions? More questions?
No more questions.
Motion? All right, I'll make one. Say no. I'll move that we do not approve this.
Can you be more specific?
That's very interesting.
Are, is it number one?
The number one, the Sequo resolution on here for the record, and we have the, obviously, the Arona ladies are, are recused themselves. So this is, this one, if, it's going to affect this item 11.
Yeah, you could just not, you could continue the item, right? Like you could continue this to the next meeting. You don't have to deny the addendum.
So rather than object it wholeheartedly, will, we can move to, move it to the next session with more detail?
Yes, though I'm, sorry, my brain's doing gymnastics about how that works with the conflicts.
Rafael, did you want to say something about this?
I mean.
I'm sorry, I overstepped my bounds here.
No, you're fine.
No, if you're going to continue, I mean, I would agree with Chelsea. If you're going to, I would, I would recommend continuing it. And if you continue it, then be very specific on what needs to get revised. Because if you're not specific, then essentially the.
We stick with what we got. More work as well.
Well, we stick with what we got, and you know, you know spiel at this point, so.
But it's Sequa. What harm are we doing by passing this?
It, it's, there's no harm in passing it, it's just the Sequa project description.
Yeah.
Matches the substantive action that you're taking. So, I mean, I guess you could adopt it tonight, but we're going to have to come back with another, like, Sequa resolution. So I would, if you're, if you want to continue the item, the problem I'm having is that the Sequa documentation covers everything, and you can't decide on the ordinances until we get.
Separately.
Yeah, and if we continue this, if we don't adopt this item and we continue it, then we can't act on any portion of the ordinance, because we have to have done Sequa before the ordinance.
But Sequa doesn't affect the nuts and bolts of this whole resolution.
Procedurally, you need to have a Sequa.
Correct.
The city needs to make a Sequa determination prior to making the substantive determination.
But let's go back. If we want to have Section 11 reviewed in another time with more public comment and everything else, and maybe some changes which we'll recommend. Do we put this whole thing off now?
I think that's appropriate, but where I'm getting stuck is if we go through, like, for example, Elizabeth Arona's ordinance, right? That's a pretty, it's one zone change we're talking about. Like, I don't think anyone's concerned about that particular change, but if we don't adopt a Sequa resolution tonight, we also cannot move forward with that piece. So we'd have to continue each item. And when we get down to the fifth item, when our recused members are back, essentially, we can't act on that either tonight or any portion of it, because we haven't adopted Sequa. And you're basically determining already, I mean, I guess there's three out of five, so that you're determining already that the whole, the whole thing is going to get continued.
But if we can't hammer out EIRs and Sequas on something, how are we going to expect to open this up to more community involvement, to understand as much as we're trying to understand, and we don't understand what we're doing?
The Sequa's going to track whatever substantive changes you make to the zoning code change. So it's, the, what I'm talking about on the order of approval, that it is procedural, but you can't take the substantive action without first taking the Sequa. And I, if you're going, if your plan is, which again, staff like strongly recommends that what we've put forward is a good, you know, should be approved. But what I'm counseling is that if your plan is when we get to the general plan resolution and the ordinance pieces that you don't want to introduce tonight, and you want to continue the hearing and tell us to come back and make certain changes, then it doesn't make sense to adopt the Sequa tonight either, because we will have to change that as well and do it all over again anyways.
But there's other things that I want to push further out for more community review, but not Sequa. I would prefer to, to pass this. It's an umbrella thing, right?
Well, but I'm hearing it's not.
Well, it is, it covers everything. So if you change the, think about it, it's probably easier to think about it in like a, a.
Fourth rate.
A development, a development project.
Uh huh.
You know, if some, if you come forward with a development project, the Sequa describes the project.
Correct. Because I understand how it works specifically to develop a project.
Yeah, if you change that project, you have to then go back and change the Sequa before you approve both the Sequa and the project. So the same thing applies here. If you, if the council is considering directing staff to make changes to the Title 11 zoning code update that we've proposed, we'll need to bring the Sequa along with that to reflect those changes. So you can approve the resolution tonight, but just know that we're going to have to do that again to reflect any revised project.
Understood. Specific to the project. I see nothing wrong with passing this right now.
But if we don't pass it right now.
Then we can't take any other substantive actions tonight.
Any of the rest of this.
Right.
Milk toast of what we have for us tonight.
So is there something, aside from just taking out 11, let's see, let's assume we want to take out 11, which is, again, fine, you know, it's your decision. Are there any other sort of changes that potentially, because I'm trying to think in my head, okay, if you take out 11 in design districts, so be it. We, would there be anything else that potentially would amend it? Because then again, that, that just reverberates a little bit through the text, and we strike out the text where we need to, based on, you know, future chapter 11 and we, or future chapter 10, and we just put chapter 10 as reserved and call it a day.
And I think we could probably make that change, the addendum, on the fly.
We very much can.
But if it's, you know, edits we're talking about, then, you know, that, that would need to come back.
So we could approve this without chapter 11?
Or, or, or chapter 10, I want to, chapter 10.
Yeah, chapter 10.
Chapter 10.
Chapter 10.
Right. And again.
If I said chapter 11, I would have sworn it.
I've given you the reason and rationale.
Recently.
I've provided the reason and rationale why it was fast forward.
Chapter 10, yeah.
And, and so that's, that's, that's that. However, I will say again, our housing element pinges on getting all three sites rezoned. We are well past the rezone date, and we need to show progress. If you do not show progress, the state with the new laws can come back and deem our housing element incomplete, which opens, or deems our, our housing element, and, and comes back and opens us up to builder's remedy.
Okay, and Rock, that means passing the Sequa thing.
That's the beginning.
Yeah.
But if, but if you want to take out chapter 10, I believe on the fly that that would have no, we, yes, we could take it out, we could vet some more and go through all the motions and do all the workshops and analyze, you know, continue the analysis, no problem. But everything else is up substantive.
So the motion then is to approve this item one with the exception of chapter 10. So we've got a Sequa approval with the exception of chapter 10.
Okay, so, sorry, this is just complicated, so apologies while we're thinking through it on the fly.
And this is the easiest part of what we're talking about today.
Well, but, you know.
And I'm criticizing.
Okay. So I think because the proposed change that you're talking about is just to omit something that's been analyzed under Sequa, rather than add something that's been, that needs to be analyzed, if that makes sense? Like, we're not adding more, we're just saying, we've analyzed title 10, but you don't want to, or, excuse me, chapter 10, but you don't want to adopt that substantively?
Right.
You can just adopt the Sequa analysis. If you were making, thinking about making changes that would, you know, change a development standard and add something new, that's different, because then we wouldn't have analyzed it. But because you're basically just like carving out part of what we analyzed, we can pass the Sequa resolution as presented, and you don't need to qualify it. But when we get to the fifth element, we will need to have an asteric amend.
An asterisk in the fifth element to take out chapter 10.
Right. Okay, I think we're there.
Oh, run with it.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Thank you for working with me on that.
I was asleep.
Yeah, right. Man. So we're saying approve this item one, which is the Sequa resolution.
Do it. Second.
I'll move we approve item one as a Sequa resolution.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll talk about item five here later.
And specifically, that's resolution number 24-1254.
I believe that's correct. No, it's 24-1272.
Sorry, I was in the, in the attachments, that's a prior resolution. Apologies. Okay, let's do that again. Let me look at the actual agenda rather than trying to find it in the, okay. Yeah, so that's resolution number 24-1272.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Now we need a roll call. Oh, we got.
I thought I seconded.
Who seconded it? He seconded it.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Infanti.
Yes.
Motion passes 3O.
Okay, so now we need to go to item two, which is resolution 24-1273.
Now we do the coin flip. Or no, sorry, we have to do the general plan resolution first.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. General plan resolution, quality.
Okay, so now we're going to.
Now we're going to resolution number 24-1273, to amend the general plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is the land use map and the land use element for consistency with the zoning regulations. Okay? for consistency with the zoning regulations. Okay?
And just a refresher, this is to amend the one parcel across the street to, from TRC or from tourist commercial to public.
Public.
And then amending the land use tables to just make sure the zones all meet each other. That's it.
Okay.
Normal discussion. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 241273, amend the general plan, land use map, and land use element for consistency with the zoning regulations.
I'll second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Infanti.
I think so. Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Two recused.
Okay, so now we're gonna introduce, for the first reading, by title only, Ordinance 24376, which is rezoning a few of these elements. Remind us on this one, if you would, please, Rafael.
I'm sorry, we were chatting. If you could say that again, Mayor.
Recap Item 3, please.
Item 3.
Yeah, for the benefit of the audience, right?
So, this is now where we do the coin flip to see if three or four will go first. Okay?
Okay, flip a coin. You need one?
Literal?
Look at this, she's got a coin.
Literally gonna, I have a nickel, so we'll see if I can catch it.
We want to receive.
It's a little smaller than a quarter. You can, it's a real nickel. Okay. This is why I do it this way, instead of like some number generator on my computer because everybody can see it. Whoops.
Did we define which?
Nope, we didn't. I got excited.
Tails is B. We're going with B, right?
No, hold on. Let me do it again. Okay, A, heads is A, tails is B. Let's try this again. Tails.
B. Okay, that's what we had last time.
Let the record show.
No.
You can't flip a coin.
Thank you for bearing with me. I know this is getting comical at this point. Okay.
It's getting more comical.
I know.
Item number four, never promised, you know, flipping coins was not part of my job description, so. Didn't practice. Okay, so now we're doing Item 4, which is to introduce by first reading by title only, Ordinance Number 24377, to create the Village Design District Overlay Zone DD1, rezoning the tourist commercial zone to Village Mixed Use, rezoning institutional zone to public institution, rezoning APN 13930001, Creekside Open Space from Recreation to Open Space, rezoning APN 139181014, Solving Park from Recreation to Parks, rezoning the parking lot, I'm gonna stop with APNs because we already read it into the record, rezoning the parking lot across from Solving and the parking lot across from, excuse me, rezoning the parking lot across from Solving Park, the parking lot between Mission Street and Copenhagen, and rezoning, I'm reading the wrong one, aren't I? I'm reading the wrong one.
No, you're good. Oak Street Parking Lot and then...
No, I think this is the one that I needed.
13991.
The actual ordinance. Apologies. Hold on, we had a typo in the agenda, so... So, it's Ordinance Number 240377. And we're amending standards for professional office zone, rezoning the TRC to the Village Mixed Use, rezoning the institutional zone to public institution, rezoning commercial retail to commercial, to retail commercial, and then rezoning the Creekside Open Space from Recreation to Open Space, rezoning Solving Park from Recreation to Parks, rezoning the parking lot across from Solving Park, the parking lot between Mission Street and Copenhagen Drive, Oak Street Parking Lot, the Annex Building, the Alisell Parking Lot, and the Storage Yard across from the city, the City Hall Parking Lot and City Hall from tourist commercial to public institution, and amending the zoning map in Title 11 to reflect the same. So, these are all of the things that Ms. Claudia Arona is recused from. And I just want to point out that one of the... Yeah, the, one of them is the Village Design District Overlay Zone. So, if the council wants to remove that, that affects this ordinance.
The Villa, if, remove it from...
If the council does not wish to approve the changes to Chapter 10A to create the, the Design District, the Village Commercial, Village Design District and those objective standards, this is the resolution, or, excuse me, this is the ordinance that that piece is in. The Mission District is in the, the last ordinance. So, you would...
So, this is one we could take out here for a future meeting. Okay.
So, you would give, what I would recommend is if you want to do that, you would give staff direction on specifically what changes you want to be made, and we would bring back revised, a revised ordinance next time.
Now, the bringing...
You just want more time?
Yeah, I was gonna say...
You gotta make specifics.
But, but there's some specific things I'd like, we'd like to do, but I can't give you them all, all tonight. We're gonna have to give it in the future. So, you want them tonight?
If, without direction, staff can't make the changes you want, so...
I'd, I'd, glad to give staff direction, but I have to go through all these line by line and give them to them. I can't do that right now.
So, you're directing, it's just more time, right?
Yeah.
Is that possible?
Another option is just to vote, yeah, you could continue this ordinance as it is.
Would that be upsetting to staff? Not that I care.
We are here to do your direction.
Understood.
It's just, if you don't tell us now what types of changes you want, we can't come back with a different ordinance.
Okay. So, what we're gonna want?
Not yet, because we haven't voted on her resolution yet.
I know, but we...
Yeah, but second's in consent. You can always pull it, but...
So, they're, until they, like, Claudia can't come back if they don't adopt this one.
That'd be a disservice to the residents if you left it on consent to pull at the next meeting.
Yeah, and then start it all over again.
They're not gonna delve into the consent agenda when they see the agenda pop up, yeah.
So, this is gonna have, is gonna address height of these buildings, the second story, the percentage of, the FARs, all that stuff that affects the design, the DD1 zone. And potential pulling out some of those houses that are, lots that are not, shouldn't be involved with that.
So, if you, so if you pull out the DD, the DD1...
Right.
The objective standards go away, all right? So, there will be no objective standards. And then, again, as mentioned, even though the general plan reflects, the general plan has a portion of that in and has the community design element, has policies, any purely 100% residential project moves forward, you know, without objective standards, even though it's sitting in the design district and wants to have that old world Danish look, by removing Design District 1.
And, and nothing that we're touching on tonight has anything to do with Lot C?
Nothing that we're doing has anything to do with Lot C. And then, so...
I would vote to approve this then.
Yeah, so if we vote, if we, if you adopt this, if you introduce this ordinance, it would introduce the, as part of it, the Design District 1, objective standards. But there's nothing stopping us from amending that later. You know, like, assuming it goes to second reading and is adopted, like, we can still continue to have the conversation and change all of those standards again.
Why, why, why can't we have a second meeting to address those now rather than waiting for a second reading and stopping it then?
We, we can, but if you want, I mean, you could have... Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a timing problem because the longer we wait to implement objective standards, where it sounds like there are applications that we're aware of that we would be at a disadvantage for not having applications, direct, objective standards of some kind, even if they're not in their final form. But yes, it's always an option to continue this item or, you know, bring it back and decide not to introduce the ordinance tonight. You know, we closed the public hearing, so that means unless we open it again, we're gonna renotice anyways to continue this. But procedurally, this is just, it's complicated because if you don't, if you, if you adopt... Okay, let me see if I can state this succinctly. So, you could adopt this ordinance and just omit the Village Design District Overlay Zone and then adopt everything else that Claudia Arona is recused from. And that would get part of it done, but she still won't come back for any of the items tonight then because the Village Design District Overlay Zone is part of her conflict and it hasn't been resolved. But we could at least get some of this off the table and then go to Elizabeth's ordinance and then the final one. The problem with that is, is that this is a comprehensive update and so, the organization of the entire Title 11 has completely changed. So, we, adopting it, even though we've segmented it, not adopting them all together, like...
Got it.
There's no way for us to codify that.
Okay.
Well, well...
This can be amended, correct?
Yes.
Yes, 100%.
And I'm gonna make a motion to introduce the first reading by title, Ordinance Number 24377, et al., at this point.
I still not sure I understand. This thing is so woven together. Damned if you do and damned if you don't.
It's all because it recuses. I mean, we have to separate...
As...
It can be amended.
As we stated to the DRC and the Planning Commission, this is a starting point and it's always been city staff's intention to come back and refine it in amendment. That, that's, that's the biggest, that's the biggest key.
When?
As soon, if you authorize city staff to start ASAP, we start ASAP. The other thing that's hanging out there is that our end reporting year for the housing element is December 31st. We still have Site C hanging out there. And we would have to report back out to the state that we have not rezoned that site.
I thought we had Site C down at Number 5.
Right, but if we continue the item and do the whole thing, there's no Site C rezone.
Because the Number 5 is one of, is an ordinance that's gonna be affected by pulling out the Design District standards. And so, we would have to bring it back for another introduction on the December 9th meeting, which is the last meeting before the end of the year. And then it would come to second reading in the first meeting in January, which is after we would report to the state. So, you can, it's in your power to do all of that, but Rafael's just trying to explain what the, yeah, the consequences of that are for our reporting. So, you have all the information.
Yeah, I'll second Mr. Clark's motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Doesn't really matter. Just finds two to one. No.
Motion fails.
Right? No, it passes.
He said no. It's only two, one.
But there's majority of the people present in voting.
Sorry.
Motion passes for the record. Motion passes for the record, two to one. The only one that needed.
Two, one, with two recused.
So, we get Number 3 and Number 5.
So, now, I'll go get Claudia Arona.
Well, you do that in these rush meetings.
Yeah. I do want to have that brought back again by staff to address it to the residents for DD1.
I 100% hear you and I 100% agree with you. It's rather unfortunate that we are put in this state because of the applications that are potentially pending. And there is one for sure that, I don't see them on the Zoom, but they've been here the last couple of times. And so, as much as you say what you want, but really, the city staff is trying to protect in terms of the ability for the look and feel of buildings that are close to the village.
I appreciate all the work you guys do. I really do, and what you're looking out for. I'm just, I'm, I'm stuck in the middle of this process. It's legal, it's laws, it's wanting to do changes and...
It's a rock and a hard place because, again, I will, I will go back and say that we just haven't tended our farm for about 10 years. If we attended our farm, starting in 2016 when this slew of housing laws came about, I, I don't, I feel that we would not be in the position that we are today. And we were able to make better, we're able to make the decisions necessary. But unfortunately, we, it's been almost 10 years of non-farm tending, so here we are. Gotcha.
Yeah, real quick, Rafael, I want to applaud you for, I think, is a great strategic offense for these state guidelines with the, the things that you're doing. I understand that the strategic planning that you're doing here. And it's, it's worthwhile. There's the devil in the details that we're trying to get, capture, and we're trying to, you know, you know, we're trying to eat a banana split, but we only have an understanding of just vanilla, okay? But we're trying to get there with you, but this is a lot in one, in one sitting. And I think we've got, we've reached that maximum consumption.
Right.
We're overflowing.
And to be, to be frank, it was actually city staff, and so, when city staff and your budget had proposed to bring in a consultant to objective design standards, the RFP in city staff's head was going to be for specifically the Design District overlays and the Mission and residential standards. So, all of them were supposed to go as one package out to a consultant.
When did they come in?
The, the change was when the Planning Commission recommended the, the change in the boundary. And then after that, and a property owner came forward wishing to develop within that boundary. So, that was the change, and then that was the, whoa, I, we need to do something.
Gotcha. All right, moving right along. We're at Item 5. Would you like to say something, Madam Attorney?
We are on Item 3.
Oh, we gotta go back to 3.
We flipped a coin for 3 and 4.
Yeah, so now we are considering whether the council wishes to introduce for first reading by title only, Ordinance Number 240376, rezoning APN 1372900131012022024029 and 137310001 from Recreation to Open Space and amend the official zoning map of the city to reflect the same. And for the record, Ms. Elizabeth Arona is still recused.
Comments?
This is one of the simple ones.
Yeah, really. Motion?
I will make a motion to introduce first reading by title only, Ordinance Number 24376, et al.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Claudia Arona.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Infanti.
Yes.
Motion passes 401, recused.
Okay, now we can go to Number 5. What a night. Are we waiting for Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There she is. Oh, yeah, we missed you.
Did you get a cheeseburger?
All right, Madam Attorney, you want to tell us what we're doing now?
Yes, we are finally to the fifth and last piece of this. Thank you all for your patience as we work through these conflicts. And, you know, no thanks to the FPPC, I guess, for making this so complicated, but... All right, so now the council can consider whether to introduce for first reading by title only, Ordinance Number 240378, the City Council of Solving, repealing or replacing Title 11 of the Solving Municipal Code and official zoning map of the City of Solving, consisting of all those changes not included in Ordinance Numbers 240337 and 240376. So, this is the balance of the comprehensive zoning code update for Title 11.
Comments?
Sorry, we're, we're, we've got number, Item Number 5 and a part of Item Number 4, is that right?
No, no, we've, we've done Items 1 through 4, and I'm just explaining that Item Number 5, that ordinance, it's all of the changes that were not already adopted by 3 and 4, so...
So, actually, it's just, we're not even approving anything. It's just a first reading, right?
Excuse me, first reading, not, yeah, they haven't, it hasn't, it's the rest of the Title 11 changes that have not yet been introduced by those prior two ordinances. Just wanted to conceptually frame what this ordinance is.
Do it.
Any comments? All right, then let's move on to, we're done.
You need a motion and a second and a vote.
Motion on an, on an introduction?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion.
Same as the other ones.
Too long tonight.
Oh goodness.
It's an introduction.
I'll make a motion to introduce the, for first reading by title only, Ordinance number 24-378, et al.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Claudia Arona?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Infanti?
Yes.
Motion passes four one.
All right, I think we have come to the end of the meeting.
Eight, eight.
We have one more.
There's, oh, I apologize, we, it's not on here.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you, council. I just want to make it very clear that you are directing staff to begin working with the DRC and revetting some of the standards in the DD1. And I just want to make it very clear that as a direction to city staff.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Rafael, thank you very much, and this is a lot of, a lot to chew.
Rafael, the only other thing I would request is that, in that process, if you had a syllabus of sorts that we could put out to the public as to what these changes mean and what they, how they affect our residents.
And why?
And why?
And these, seriously, we go over the SB9 information? So there, I wish there were more residents here tonight, because this is such heavy stuff, that the state, I won't get on Soapbox tonight, but the state pushes on cities and municipalities that we have to deal with. It's, it's, I mean, I won't go into it, but I would like you to do what he was saying.
Thank you, I understood, and again, thank you, this is a hard subject, it's really hard. But direction is clear that we will continue refinement, and this is not the end.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to say thank you for bearing with me through all those procedural hurdles that we had to go through. Your patience is incredible, thank you.
We relied on you.
All right, then, so we'll go to item number eight. Discussion on possible action to increase the Public Works Director's salary and authorize any necessary budget adjustments. Staff report?
Okay, December 13th, the Direct, Public Works Director position will be vacated. We'll be recruiting after tonight, based on whether you approve a salary increase or not. With the preliminary class and comp study and the difficulty we had with the Utility Director position, we did ask council to increase the Utility Director salary range. And with that difficulty and with the preliminary class and comp study of having that salary range 30% below the comparable salaries, tonight, before you, we have a request to increase the Public Works Director salary up to range 152, which is where the increase to the Utility Director position went. And that is an 18.9% increase. And staff will return with the final results of the compensation and class study at a later, later date. And if you determine that you want to increase the Public Works Director's salary, we'll need a budget adjustment of $30,000. And that concludes my staff report.
Questions from the council? You look like you're gonna say something.
I do, it's just a really simple question, it's tangential, but of the FTEs that we approved to add to staff in June with the new budget, how many have we hired so far?
We've hired all of them. However, we are rehiring two maintenance positions. We didn't add those, but those are the two vacant positions that we have currently.
Okay, so we were hiring, we were adding three FTEs, as I recall, and so we've hired all three?
We hired the Management Analyst and the other two. All the positions are filled.
Okay.
And we hired the new front, what's her name, Amanda?
Yeah, but that, that was a position that wasn't added.
Yeah, but didn't we, oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So on those, did we get a pretty good level of applicants for those open positions? And I just wanted some context for why we think, without opening the job rec, a salary increase is necessary to get applicants.
Because based on the outlying agencies where our salary ranges below, and with the Management Analyst, we had, we didn't have a lot of number of applicants that were qualified. So we feel that we'll run into the same position as we did with the Utility Director. Just because it's, it's hard to find, so, go ahead.
My question is, have you discussed this position with other placement organizations? And what, what do they tell you about the salary?
Well, the class and comp study that we had, she did, I think, 11 agencies in the area, and it came out as 30% below.
But your recommendation is to increase it 18%?
Yeah, well, yes, because we're gonna bring the comp and class study back to you, and we felt that increasing it to the current Utility Director position would be fair and a start.
And how long will it take us to find somebody at this level?
We don't know, but it could probably take us six months.
Seven days and two hours.
I mean, we're hoping that, you know, it's super quick, because the Public Works Director wears so many hats and does so many different things. It's gonna be difficult to not have him here.
Also the time of year.
Right, and so we're hoping it's not gonna take a long time, but it could probably take three to six months. Because if we start recruiting tomorrow, we're not gonna be able to do interviews and have somebody in here before the end of the year. It'll be January.
Any more discussion?
A quick anecdote. When I was the chairman of the Planning Commission, we hired a planning director who commuted to Fresno every weekend for the entire duration of her employment here, because even though it's a high-paying position, I hate this, because the job pays the job, or the job is what the job pays, but you've, you've got to factor in it's expensive to live here, so it's a tough call.
Yeah, it always is.
But you want good people to be in the city.
Mr. Murphy, you have something to say?
I was gonna say, I mean, the recommendation is to go to what we're paying, currently paying, the range of the Utility Director. But the actual comp and class study will show that even that is low. So they're, they're all gonna go up, so I mean, another option would be to authorize to meet the comp and class study salary range, which is about 10%, 10 or 15% higher than this, which would then open up possibly more candidates. I'm confident, I'm really confident we can fill it at this, but then, when we come back with a comp and class study in a month or so, it's gonna be recommending to increase the salary for that position again. So that's another option, I mean, just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Make a motion, please, sir.
I move that we approve staff recommendation to the range 152 and make the necessary budget adjustments.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Clark?
No.
Councilmember Elizabeth Arona?
No.
Councilmember Claudia Arona?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, or, excuse me, Mayor Infanti?
Almost.
Yes.
Motion passes three two.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, we have come to the end of this. If there's any last comments?
No, we gotta take a break.
Take a break. Do you have any last comments from the council?
No.
In that case, we are done at 9:33. Uh oh, wait a minute, yes?
I want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And this is my last full meeting. Adios.